All right, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call this Adams County Board of Supervisors meeting. Stand for invitation.
You got chair?
Redmond Flanks. I'd like to give you the case. Almighty God, we stand before you this morning to do the business of this county. Jeff, we ask your favor to be richly upon us, but especially upon our elected officials as the board of supervisors to make wise decisions with the resources that you provide. All to your glory, be created, things will be done in Jesus' name, amen. Stand for please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I want to do the roll call. Mr. Gray. Ms. Hutchins. Mr. Gaines.
Present.
Mr. Middleton.
Present.
Ms. Dean.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Mr. Slover.
I'm here.
Mr. Slover is on the phone for us, Mr. Washington.
Present.
And I'm present. Mr. Gaines, why aren't you sitting in a kindergarten chair over there? Off the bed, I guess. Okay, I need a motion for approval of a minutes. Motion by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gaines. Mr. Gaines. We haven't passed that yet.
I don't have.
Discussion.
No discussion, okay. All approved? Say aye. Motion carries. Approval of docket, the emotion. So moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Approval of monthly financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's Office, the Chancery Court, and the purchasing clerk. So moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion approved. All right, okay, I want to thank Mr. Middleton for having me last month's meeting while I was out. He always clears my folder for me. Thank you. Special presentations, if any. Is Tim Cotton in the outside?
Right here.
All right, we do have any special presentation of sorts.
Mr. Washington, after this?
Certainly. Scott, Mr. Cotton has just come into the room. We're going to give us a little.
Hey, we need to present a picture of Scott to him.
What's that?
You might need to present a picture of Scott to him on the phone.
Can you hear us okay, Scott?
I can hear it, the board is fine, our presentation here.
Scott, can you hear me all right?
Scott, you hear him all right?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I think, I'd like to thank the ladies and gentlemen who worked to take us out of town this morning. I'm here a little bit with a hat in hand. It's the first time y'all see me in front of the board asking for something. And what I'm asking for actually is a resolution from the board. And the resolution I'm asking for, our legislature has a bill before it that was in the House. The House passed it to keep it alive, sent it to the Senate. Right now, my understanding is the Senate is looking at redistricting the entire state of Mississippi. They're trying to push that through this week to get it in conference, get it back in House form, and get it on the floor. The logistics of that is such that I can't stand before you and tell you that it's not warranted, but based off their criteria, two problems. One is population. This district has not faced the population shift that other districts in the state of Mississippi has. The second is based off a case disposition. And I'll be the first to tell you, the dispositions in this district are very, very low. And when I say disposition, I mean cases that they haven't been disposed of, quite frankly. Now, there's a million reasons why that may be, but it's all irrelevant at this point. We can do better, and we are doing better. But part of using that as a criteria to me would be if you really wanted to use that number as an evaluator, then the state would mandate an electronic form or a common means that the entire state is mandated to use to get an accurate reflection of what dispositions there are. For example, the DA's office uses crimes. I talked about this through campaigning, and we are utilizing it, using it. The Attorney General's office actually supports the database, they maintain it, and it allows us to track cases throughout the state of Mississippi and the district. We are backlogging a lot of cases in the crime. We're finding cases, going back through, filling them in, catching them up. But therein is the second part of electronics, which means the NEC part of it, and the circuit clerk in this district, not just here, it's not only the electronic version of the NEC on the circuit side of it. So you're looking at completely redrawn district lines in the state of Mississippi, but you really can't say accurately what those disposition numbers are, and you don't have a radical shift in the population change that some of the other counties have faced. You have five years from the day of the census in order to look at the redistricting, and the statute says you review it every 10 years. So reviewing it is fine, but making the changes, not knowing what those changes are, I do not think is fair to this district. I'm here asking for a resolution, and I intend to be in every board of supervisors' meetings today in this district, asking for the same thing. I've talked to a lot of my colleagues throughout the state, they are doing the same thing. When you guys are in here fighting every day for a county, for a district, we're already looking at jailing, how to come up with the money for a jail, we're looking at delays, and I don't like going back to COVID, that's just, I don't like it. But the travesty of it is, is that it was a delight. Crime labs, and I feel like them up here making excuses, but I'm not making excuses. They're all part of the reason why cases are lagging, okay? I can look at it, and my response to the legislature was, if we don't have a true accounting of dispositions, let's go back and look at indictments. I know that this year alone already, we're bothering probably 200 indictments. By comparison, the highest in the last four years, I think, was 130 for a total of a year. And so we're moving cases. But to come in here a week before conference, where you guys, as the governing body of the county, have not seen a map, a plan, or anything else to redistrict, every district in the state of Mississippi, they can still do it next year. I can't stop them from doing it next year. But what I'm hoping is that there's enough people in the community, and when they hear from our leaders, that they will say, if you want to change our districts, tell us why, show us why. There's no answer, and I've talked to senators, I have talked to the House of Representatives, nobody's seen a plan. You have several people in the small committee that's pushing a plan, and the response was that we hope to have a plan together this week, something that they can get back to the House. If you can redistrict the entire state of Mississippi, to me, that's kind of important to get a plan out there. I've heard everything from they're taking a county away from this district and adding Jefferson County, that they're not going to take a county away from this district, but they're adding Jefferson County, collapsing that district in its entirety. And so what I'm asking for today is simply a resolution that says this, we have enjoyed the working relationship that this county serves and has with the county lines of Wilkinson, Amit, and Franklin. We would like to continue that. If there's a better plan, then show us. Don't vote on it until us this is what we have to do. Thank you.
Okay, in summation, I think there are 22 districts, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And President Wilson, I know the sheriff is here, and I wasn't trying, I got long-winded there, but I've talked to all four sheriffs in this district, and they are adamantly opposed to this, not to the resolution, to the redistricting.
Of the 22 districts, we've been dead last, I think, three of the last four years in dispositions, meaning closure of cases because the work wasn't getting done. Now, since you took over, you've been in office three months?
Yes.
How many cases have you disposed of?
I would say we're probably close to 100 now.
In three months?
Yes, sir.
And you said for the whole year, for a couple of years, 194 total?
I don't know that it ever did. Ninety-four one year, 72 another year, and I think there was maybe 120 for another year.
So with that being said, we were looking pretty bad as a lead district, being in last place, because we didn't appear like that our offices were doing anything, and our courts were doing anything, but just kind of sitting on our hands and having some people in jail and letting most of the rest of them out on bail. Been a rough four years for Adams County, Franklin County, Amit County, and Wilkinson. But I know that they're trying really hard to keep that under control. Sheriff, you had something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, I appreciate the job you're doing, because it is clearing a lot up in the system for us, but I wanted to go on record saying that I'm totally in support of what he's asking for, of course. So if you all do this resolution, you don't mind, I'd like my name to be included with yours on the resolution, saying that I support what you're asking me to do today.
Yes.
I have my reasons, Sheriff.
And President Wilson, again, we're not saying that it's not feasible, we're saying, before you tell us we have to, give us a chance to see what you're proposing.
I certainly understand that. They've already typed up a resolution for us, if y'all be willing to vote on it, I need a motion.
President, we just got this, let me.
You want to look at the resolution?
Yes, so let me kind of clarify for the people out here that really don't understand what's going on. Now, this is a judiciary district, it's not the regular redistricting that they do for the place legislatures in different places. This is about the district attorney's right.
Well, Supervisor Gray.
On that.
No, it's about every court in this district. So it would be the DA, the circuit court, the youth court, county court, and the chancery court. And while you're on that, it may not be specific to this county as we're looking at it, but again, when we're talking about jails and we're talking about backlogs, if you rechange a district and we're already slowed down, and then you take cases and say, well, this is not your district, so take these cases and go give them to that person, let them get up to speed, take those cases away, and then bring us other ones, you're asking for continued delight, and you're asking for an expense to go with that.
I understand what you're saying, but for clarification for the people out here, we just redistricted. They may think we're talking about, I guess we're not trying to get clarification. The legislature just redistricted because they drew Senator Sojourner out of her district. This is not what we talking about. We talking about something else. That's the reason I'm trying to clarify that for the people out there, where they can get a better understanding of the redistricting you're talking about.
Yes, it is for the court district.
That's all, traveling.
Yes.
Make it plain and clear where everybody can understand what's going on.
Scott, do you have any comment?
Yes, Mr. President, I personally feel like the district should remain the same, you know, not just the district attorney, but both circuit, chancery, and everything else. Putting us with another county miles away would not be conducive to justice. So again, I think, I haven't seen the resolution talking about.
It hasn't been drawn, apologies. I have some resolutions in front of me, but that's not one of them. And I assume that you would have to draw that up. How soon would you need that?
They're trying to make it this week. So I'm here today, and I'm meeting all four board of supervisors today. So before it is voted on, it may not make a difference, but I at least want our legislative delegation, who, and just for the record, I have spoke with our delegation, they are opposed to it. And so giving them something to fight with, to say, our constituency is asking for a plan before we have to do this, we're behind, we're behind the eight ball on it, get it done.
Scott, do you have any suggestions there? I would like to vote on a resolution, do a resolution, and then it can be drafted and signed.
Yeah, let me read over it.
I missed you there, Scott.
I thought you were about to speak.
Yeah, he said he just texted you something.
Yes, I had an incident with you, right?
Okay, what?
The resolution is for the court boundaries to, you know, remain the same, act as a comprehensive plan, that's my understanding of what the request is, and, you know, we could draw something up with that and circulate to the rest of the, rest of the county board attorneys that are in our district.
Okay, is that something we can go ahead and vote on to get it started? Yeah, pending your legal review?
That's a more cross play.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, oh, for a pending of a legal review.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm here to assist and do what I think is right for everybody involved. I just texted the attorney a copy of what was sent here evidently. Now, this must have been discussed with you and nobody else. I just don't like voting on something that I get. It's just, if you give the attorney an opportunity to read over it, I mean, before the day is over, he could come back and say he feel comfortable with it. From what I heard on the phone, that wasn't a vote of confidence to me, unless he reading over it now and gonna say something totally different. I don't have a problem with it, but I need him to look over it, that's why we hired him.
Actually, he's drawing up the resolution, it's going to be his words, not anybody else's?
I understand, I ain't got a problem with it, but I need to read what he draw up too. I just can't vote on something I never, I haven't seen, and maybe he can draw it up and get it back to us. And this attorney just did this, only thing he got to do is look at what he did and go from there, it shouldn't be that hard for him to draw it up, right?
Supervisor Gray, if I can respond, the proposed resolution that I had is one that's uniformly going out throughout the district. I received that copy from another DA's office. As far as discussing this beforehand, the only thing I asked to do was to have the opportunity to speak. So much of what each of y'all are hearing, y'all are here for the first time individually.
I ain't got a problem with it, I just want my legal counsel to be a little more confident than what he was over the phone. So if you allow him to read over this, do whatever, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't like.
Go ahead, Scott. Go ahead, Scott.
So what the resolution says, we unanimously oppose any redistricting that would get rid of the circuit court district with payment of Adams, Franklin, and Wilkinson County. That's what it's requesting. And then second part of it, sorry, I have to rewrite it. All members of the legislative delegation oppose those changes, so those two make the same. We oppose separating us out of that circuit court district, and we are asking our delegation to oppose such legislation, that's worth backing for.
Are you good with it?
I'm good with it, of course, it's the board shares in that view that we oppose splitting us up. And professionally, I would be opposed to splitting us up, our district should, you know, we may not have the caseload, but geography is as important to handling cases as anything else, and, you know, putting us in a different district is just, it's not conducive to take on any caseload operations, that's not the full, that's not the full story of handling court cases quickly and judicially, so.
I'm going to say this, and I don't have a problem with it, because I know you, and the sheriff is on board with it, I just want a legal counsel to do his job, and I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, resolution's passed. Thanks, thank you for your time.
I wish you.
And thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank y'all. Okay, is Brett Carson? Yes, sir. You can stand and podium if you'd like.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
I've been, I need to start by saying, we're partners, a vision of a board of the presentation, and I think I like trying to move forward and get going again on the jail. And so what our company does is we do a very unique type of funding, so it's not a loan, it's not a, you know, bond, any of those kind of things. What we do is we, whatever the item is, of course, this is the jail, we would, you know, get all the, everything that we need, we build it, but then we also maintain, repair, replace as needed. So we're constantly deploying money, so it's not just a one-time, you know, here's some money, good luck. And we do all this based on a monthly usage fee. Now, a usage fee can be very flexible, it can be based on prisoners, it can be based on square footage, it can be, you know, that would just be something we could talk about and whatever y'all would be comfortable with, or maybe it's a percentage of a tax revenue that goes to the jail, or whatever it may be. We do all this with a 10-page contract, and each thing would be like a one or two-page service of them, so there's just a one-time master contract, and then everything passes as a service of them. I've got brochures that I handed out, just kind of gives a general overview or backstory on who we are. So if you think about software, you used to buy software, and, you know, after a couple of years, it wouldn't be supported anymore, you had to buy some more, well, now you pay some type of subscription, that software is always being upgraded, made improving, that kind of thing. That's what we do with infrastructure. So what we've seen across this country is, you know, in situations like this, everyone's debt's doing this, and their infrastructure's doing this. Where what we do is we come in and we're constantly improving the infrastructure, going up, and your monthly usage fee is staying the same. So that's kind of how we're unique that way. Because we're 30 days, month to month, we're going to be with you, you know, trying to earn your business every month, and it follows the Pabella rules, so therefore this would not be debt on your books at all. And that's, you know, that's about the real quick version of it. So I'd open it up to the floor, it's probably easier, you know, if y'all had questions that I could answer.
Anybody? Do you have any questions, new question? Mr. Slover? Do you have any comments on the, what was this person?
Yes, Mr. President, I think it's a very intriguing plan, and I would like, you know, to kind of look at what costs might be for it, so if the board, if something the board might be interested in looking at, then I would, you know, would like to get permission to figure out, give them the information they need to tell us about costs and that sort of.
Okay, well, he's got his brochure here and a card that will be left for you. We'll just kind of take it from there.
And the way we work is obviously we would get, you know, your scope of work and any and everything that would be involved in that, whether it's legal fees, engineering fees, and that, I'll be wrapped into the project, and you don't make the first payment until the project is completed.
All right, Sheriff had something we'd like to say?
Could you elaborate more on the, when you say the debt wouldn't be on the books, how does that all work?
So if you have a flexible payment, and it's a month to month, and then there's one other item, but it's a thing that went to the course, like I said, it's called the Pabella rules. And so when you follow those three things, then it's not considered debt. So we're basically a service. So think about, you know, somebody say, oh, but this is something we've got to keep paying, we've got to keep paying. Well, you keep paying your light bill too, but that's not debt. So it's an ongoing thing, because on any given 30 days, you can call up the electric company and say, hey, turn it off. So even though it's an ongoing, you know, long-term thing, because that's what we are trying to do, is have 100 of your customers, and even though it's a long-term deal, like I said, we're constantly deploying money as things need to be upgraded, maintained, fixed, you know, that kind of deal, it follows along those same lines, it's like I said, it's just like your electric bill. So wherever you have your electric bill in your budget or your, you know, your books, we would be in that same, in that same group.
Do you have any examples, for instance, a square footage cost or a per prisoner cost, because those are the two I believe you mentioned?
No, I mean, I don't, I can, I can, the only one that I can think of real quickly, we had talked with Sid Guttrow in East Baton Rouge Parish, and when we were looking at, now this was, you know, before COVID, before prices have changed, that kind of thing, to give you an example for him, he needed a new jail, I guess some type of mental health facility as well, because that's going to be, you know, the thing you got to have, you're going to get grants and give you that kind of deal. But basically, he was spending $8 million a year on putting prisoners in other places, because his jail was full, falling apart, that kind of thing. We went in with, you know, again, just very quick, rough estimates, and he was probably looking at spending about $4 or $5 million a year on our monthly usage fee. So right off, we were going to save him, you know, $3 million a year, because we were going to build the jail big enough where it could house these additional prisoners that, you know, he was putting in other places. Not to mention whatever money he's spending every year on maintenance, you know, that kind of thing. So that's just a real quick example, I don't know how that would pan out, man, with the way, you know, prices have skyrocketed and done. It's hard to, you can't, because it's not like a loan or something, you can't just say, okay, well, if you have $10 million, it's this much a month, because it's based on what those items are. So if I have an item that I'm going to probably need to fix in three years, then that's going to be a different monthly usage fee than an item that maybe I'll fix for 20 years. So, you know, that's kind of how we look at it.
In the process, do you help with grants? Do y'all help with the grants as far as hitting them, you know, applying for?
I don't know how much we can help, but we are, like, let's say that you do get a grant, then we can be the match, since we're not dead, we can be the match for you. Now, we work with, you know, a bunch of different cities that have gotten grants, and we're, you know, we fill in the gap for them.
Yes.
With the way you all do the financing, is there a clause in there that allow, say if the board decided you do all the financing deal, and they sign down the road, that, hey, we want this going, pay it out, get out of it, is there a clause in there that allows them?
It's us every 30 days, any given 30 days, you can get out of contract, and we would look at, you know, what, because we don't mark up anything, we don't mark up any materials, services, anything like that. So any given 30 days. So any given thirty days, you can get out of, there's no payment penalties, there's none of that kind of thing. And what we would look at is, okay, here's what the job costs and, and what the life is. Um, and that's how we would come up. So we, we bring a, a, a third-party appraiser in that y'all recruit. And they would look at it, because what we want to do is, let's say it's a twenty-year item, and you're ten years in. So you go, okay, well, you have, you know, wherever the profit is. But let's say that appraiser goes, well, there's probably only seven years of useful life left. So we would prorate based on seven years, not the ten. Or if he says, well, there's twelve years left, you would still only pay the ten. So we're protecting you on both sides. And again, the reason for that is because you, as a government body, you can't just buy something that, um, you know, that's not worth what it's worth. And so that's why we make sure that we protect you where, um, you know, you're, you're getting what you're, you're supposed to be getting.
Any situation where you ever called in a debt?
Like, I say, all right, we, we need to pay this off now.
Oh, no, we would never do that. So we don't do any kind of UCC filings. We actually had, uh, three or four cities, um, during COVID that called us up and said, look, the governor said we can't shut the water off, we have no revenue coming in, we can't pay, it was suspended, they're paying some over three months, some over six months. Whenever they were good, they started paying again, they came back to us and said, how much more do we need to add to our payment to catch up? It was like, nothing. I don't even put it on the back end. No, there's no backing, because it's every thirty days. Our goal is to, that's why we call sustainability partners, keep you sustained and to be your partner. So we will come in and help you however we can, if all of a sudden there's some type of issue, um, to help you out. Because again, we're looking for a hundred-year customer. You didn't pay for six months.
Okay. Yes, sir.
A lot of questions this morning. I know that finance rates and things are there based on the number of years that it can be financed out. And I understand how it works with the MMTs with the county. They're leaning on how far that debt can be stretched out to make it work for the board, but.
It'll just be stretched out based on the, the, the life. Uh, I mean, if you got, yeah, if you got pipe, it's a hundred-year pipe, we can, we can do it over a hundred years. I mean, we're not, we're not set where it only has to be this. Now, obviously, if you're dealing with something that's only gonna last five years, then we can stretch it out over five years, because we know in five years, we're gonna be replacing that. And so as long as you stay in the system, we're constantly improving or constantly replacing, you'll never have that headache again, you'll never have that maintenance cost at all.
So basically, you guys can make it work where people don't have to butt it forward, we have to raise taxes.
Correct, correct. Especially on something like a building, I mean, you're talking forty, fifty years, you know.
All complex years.
Okay.
And again, my, you know, again, this is just my suggestion, but let's say that you do come across with a grant or whatever. What we always suggest is use your grant on the building, just, I don't need any maintenance, it's bricks or whatever. Let us do all the MMT, casual electrical plumbing, that is gonna give you problems. And then that way, it's our problems, not your problems.
Okay. Um, you have any comments, Mr.?
I'm good.
All right. Well, you know, you kind of had the floor here for a while. Is, is, Mr. Jeremy have anything to say?
I do. Um, we're trying to look with the committee, trying to look at all options. And Bert was a different option, and thanks for coming today. Um, so that we can see, this is totally different than anything you all have ever done, or that we've done with the infrastructure in, in the county. You've not had anybody to maintain. That's always been your headache. So to me, I may be wrong, but that's what I gathered. So we thought this would be a different option, and today we also wanted the, uh, ability to give him any information as we work with the builder, with David. Um, and that's why we wanted to bring it before the board today.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? You got any comments?
And just so y'all know, two of us, uh, you know, we've, we've got several cities that were paying some, some deals from doing that. But, you know, one of our latest ones was, we were wanting to win in Jackson, Mississippi, and solving that issue for them. And when the federal government came in and took over, they got rid of every vendor that was dealing with that except us. And they've now given us more stuff to do. So obviously, we have to spell that out.
Okay. Uh, appreciate you coming in today. Uh, very informative to give, give them some more things to work off of. Thank you.
President, are you doing any other counties like this, and how many counties are you working with?
I, well, counties nationwide, I'm not sure. In Mississippi, I think we're mainly just doing city. So we've, we've got, you know, like I said, we got, well, I guess we're already doing the county improvement. Jackson, Mississippi does that. Um, what we're fixing to do there, I think, is like the sewer and water plant. Also, that probably covers, that's probably a county deal there. Um, but we're doing, we're looking at doing stuff in Byron, Falls Point, Gulfport. Um, again, Gulfport's a combination of the county and the city. It depends on what the project is, because they have some, um, they have some things where they both work together, and they're living together. So Gulfport will be another one where we're doing different items there. Uh, water meters, retiring their, their bonds, doing stuff with the zoo or aquarium or whatever it is, some kind of penguin house. Um, just, you know, they, they got lists like this of stuffers. Plus, we're fixing to do, uh, the hospital there, which, again, is a hospital district. I'm not sure if that's a county or a district, whatever, with their hospital.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you for bringing the options to the table, and, uh, pretty much sure that, um, we'll do a little research and, you know, check some backgrounds, and, uh, sounds like you do a really good job of helping the communities. And, you know, not only the helping the citizens here, but you help taxpayers and everything. So I think that's something, uh, in the future, they're really looking to, and thank you for coming and presenting that.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, again, like I said, our product and what we're doing is the money. So we're actually infusing money into the, into the county, not taking it out. We're not bringing our people in here. You know, we're using whoever, you know, like whoever you're comfortable with. So when I say we're gonna maintain it, that means that, let's say I put a, an HVAC system on this building, and you've been dealing with bills AC down the road, we're just gonna get the builders to come fix it, and we're gonna pay. So we're not about taking money out of, out of the county, we're about putting money into the county and making it, making it a better situation.
Okay. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks.
Yes. Is Brett Parker back there?
He's in the hallway.
Good morning.
Morning. Mr. Brett.
Uh, I got an email from Attorney Scott Slower. If you recall, last meeting, I spoke about perhaps allowing some time for, uh, time off for employees to get their wellness benefit. Uh, and Scott found there was an opinion by the Attorney General that does allow actually for up to two hundred dollars for helping people with going to incentivize people to go to the wellness, uh, checkup. Uh, and in thinking about that, I realized, you know, with two hundred employees, two hundred dollars in time off, that's a lot of time off and a whole lot of money. So I came up with just several suggestions, which are that, of course, uh, such as a half-day off for your annual wellness benefit. And if, you know, you can get your colonoscopy at forty-five and up, and that's a crucial test for males and females. And if you get your colonoscopy a whole day off, uh, that was one thought in my mind. And then another was a half-day off for your, uh, wellness checkup. Uh, and a whole day off plus a hundred dollars if you get your colonoscopy. The reason I mentioned that, uh, is that a lot of people, when you get your colonoscopy, if you've never had one, number one, you're anesthetized, so you can't drive, you can't do anything. You have to have somebody with you to go get the colonoscopy. And oftentimes, there are costs, uh, in terms of, that are not covered by health insurance when you go get a colonoscopy. Uh, so a lot of people go to GI endoscopy, they want Dixburg, want a Jackson. So these are just some ideas I came up with for discussion to put before the board. Uh, it just, as a reminder, I went back this weekend and pulled reports and looked at the number of people that, percentage of employees that did not go get a wellness exam in 2023. And it was about set sixty-six to seventy percent. Uh, and this is common, especially amongst private companies, to incentivize employees. Or in some cases, they actually punish employees that don't go get their wellness checkup. Uh, but as we know, we can't do that. But we did get news that we can incentivize the employee with perhaps a time off that doesn't go against their sick time or PTO or vacation time. And with that knowledge, I just thought I'd meet with y'all and put it before you and see what you guys thought.
I'm certainly thinking it's something we oughta, we oughta consider doing, uh, something along those lines, because almost seventy percent of the people don't get their wellness check, let alone a colonoscopy, which could save a lot of lives or a lot of health expenses.
Right. The way, and the way I look at it, uh, Mr. President, is that, uh, well, I, I tried to pull up the number of how many people are over forty-five on the county. And I, I couldn't pull that up, but we know it's not, there's more people over forty-five, I think, than under. Uh, but I thought to myself, you know, even if you spend, if you allow an employee a day off and a hundred dollars to go get their colonoscopy, and there were fifty in a year, and that's five grand, and you go out and five years, that's twenty-five grand. But one stage four, stage three colon cancer could cost hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so at, at that, uh, with that, again, I, perhaps this is something that needs more thought on your, your part. Uh, and, uh, it is.
Okay, I, I believe what we probably need to do is, like, Stephanie, kind of look at things and, and figure out, uh, you know, what might be the best alternative. I really think it is a good idea to do something along those lines to get, get people.
Well, I'll, I'll come up, I'll have these suggestions piped up, and it can go come meet with you, Seth, if that's okay. And then, uh, we'll get back together.
This is good, Dan.
Yes, sir.
If it's legal, I don't have a problem with it, because we are self-insured. And that depends on healthy employees, because if you don't have healthy employees and you self-insure, you're gonna get some kind of bills we've been getting lately for, uh, employees that's sick. So it, it's very important if it's legal. Make sure that it's legal, Scott.
I did, uh, Scott sent me the Attorney General's opinion, and it is in writing. Uh, so, uh, you know what that is, sir?
No.
It's an opinion.
It, it should have been copied to the rest of the board.
Yeah, I got it.
Boy, when you get right down to it, there's nothing worse. People put that off forever. They don't want to do it. They've heard the horror stories about they want to get a colonoscopy or whatever. Wellness check should be simple. But the colonoscopy is different, and they wait, and they wait, and then they're sick, and then they go with it. But they never get the colonoscopy, they say we couldn't, you, you guys got stage four colon cancer already, we're gonna have to operate, whatever. It's either a death sentence, or, like you say, a two or three hundred thousand dollar expense on a self-insured plan. And if we can get people to do that, and I know, I know there's somebody in this room that had, had forced their husband to do the stages like four, five years ago. Uh, and, and I'm not gonna point them out, but I just know that if she had not been so persistent, that he would be dead today.
Yeah, it, it, the opinion basically provides us, since we are allowed to create our own personnel, all of these and so forth, that we can do it in such a way that you, that, that, you know, that are their employment package, that can do these type of things. It goes, reminds you that we do give a bonus date or something along those lines, that that would not be something that curbs, would, would recognize. But there's, there's a way to do it, and it's, the board wants us to maybe put together a proposal, we certainly can.
I think that's something we need to work on. I appreciate you, uh, brainstorming and trying to figure out.
And I'll, I'll get Stephanie, I'll get something together to come meet with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Excuse me. Mr. Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't go ahead.
Yeah, I know we used to, we did have a Healthy Youth program one time. Do you recall that?
Oh, it's still there.
It's still there.
For a little bit of history, if I'm accurate.
Yeah, because I, I probably did that.
The, uh, Blue Cross was here in Mississippi, had probably the best wellness program, one of the best in the United States. And when the Affordable Care Act was passed, the guidelines for the Affordable Care Act for a wellness benefit on every health plan compliant, ACA-compliant plan in the United States, that benefit was much less than what Blue Cross was already doing. So Blue Cross shift, like every other plan in the United States, if they were over that, they shifted to what the ACA said do now. Uh, so the Healthy Youth is still there. It's still called the Healthy Youth. Uh, however, some of the benefits have changed on the Healthy Youth implied that. And I think you have had, you and I have had this discussion before. Uh, Blue Cross doesn't, uh, just willy-nilly come up and say, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that. Their guidelines are the American Medical Society and, and things like that, in terms of how often someone is tested. For instance, the colonoscopy test wellness uses start at fifty, but there are so many incidents of colon cancer prior to age fifty. Blue Cross and many other plans lowered that to forty-five. So, and to answer your question, the Healthy Youth is still there, although some of the benefits. And on another note, when I looked at the Healthy Youth wellness, uh, statistics, it was a very low number of the employees that got their full benefit from the Healthy Youth. And I think, in thinking about that, that's more on the providers than on the patient. Because the patient, when you go in for your wellness benefit, you don't go in and say, I don't wanna da-da-da-da-da, does that help? You assume the doctors can know what is allowed by your plan. So, uh, that may be something that, uh, I need to get out to employees, that when they do their wellness benefit, to be sure that their doctors understand what the benefit covers and to, and to utilize that full.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brett.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Odell Carter?
Yes, sir.
Come on in. Come on in, everyone. My name is Odell Carter.
Yes.
I live at, go ahead.
I'm, I'm going out of, saying I'm trying to.
I live at two eleven Han Street. I'm in Han, I'm in Adams County. My reason here.
This is off Morgan Down Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My reason here this morning is because I need some help. I, I need help bad. Uh, round twenty-twenty one, am I right? We had that plug up down there.
You were correct.
Right, okay. And this is in front of the house, drain in the back of the house. Your worker went back there and tore, pushing it out, it parted there, and it has been, not been replaced. So I, you know, it's four years, what, what's taken so long for that?
Well, what was tore out behind the house, what I'm aware of.
This is in front, this is in front of the house.
Yeah.
It, it's drain, main drain going down to the back. It was plugged up. They went around there and tore that out. It's unplug it, but it was not stopped up there. It was, it was stopped on the front. They had to run that thing through there, uh, uh, pipe truck, and it stopped there. It was some fuses. I'm not watching.
If I'm late, Mr. Dog, would you come in on that?
They went out there and unplugged it, run a fire hose through it, had a bunch of clothes, a bunch of debris in it, in the drain. They got it unstopped, but they went in the back, this one, my car was here, working in that area, and they went to the back and took part of the pipe off the back, what they thought was plugged up there, and then they went to the front. And got it unplugged, so it's been unplugged, been open, we've been keeping an eye on it. But like I said, it was plugged up with some clothes and debris and things that's gone from some abandoned houses in that area there that were still individual, whatever, that had, had plugged up, but that's what took place at that time.
How, how much of the drain do we remove?
About twenty foot, probably twenty.
My concern is, it, it's an open-up water, that, that is, don't lose that whole hill right there, that. That, that is, don't lose that whole hill right there, that drain is not replaced. And God forbid, if a child falls down there, he's gonna die. It, it don't got just that bad.
Robbie, have you been out there lately? Do you have pictures you know?
Been out there, Rick.
Do you know what we need to do, or if we need to do something?
We go, Rick, it's a mobile home sitting there right at the top of the drain that's there. Uh, he's not the landowner. He owns the land.
It's no marketing.
But it's a mobile home sitting over the drain. Uh, I spoke with the brother of the landowner, this guy who lives in Louisiana, that owns the land, that the mobile home's sitting there. But it's not hooked up, no power, no water, no nothing to it. So, don't get with him, we either have to move it or do something with it. It's not a real big mobile home, but they just moved it there, get it to have somewhere to put it.
Okay, and it's gonna impede our ability to.
It's set right over the drain pipe.
And so, he not on his property, uh, he not on Jason's property?
No, not his property at all.
I'm gonna get to my property. Uh, that's on the front of my property, across the street. That's, that's, that's the drain. I asked for a drain on my side of the street. I'm scared of fighting water coming from the other side. That's the main drain right there. This is one side of my, on the end. I asked for a drain on my side of the street. I, I, I hadn't, I hadn't got a, no, no response to that right there.
No response?
Once that, once that plugged up, the water backs all back up the street and goes right up to my house. As a matter of fact, you were there when it happened.
More response, yes, sir.
The right side of the road never had a drain. When it developed, it comes across, it's got a cross pipe, and it comes into houses before you get to his property. It's got, up on the hill, it's got a pipe that goes out to the vibe. When it goes out to the vibe, then it comes around behind his property and goes to the creek. So in the development of Hammont Street or the neighborhood, it was never a ditch, pipes or nothing put on the right side because there's no area through there to do it. We worked with him, we built barns in front of his house, we've done all this out the street to try to help correct the water problems, keep it from flowing down. But he is the last house down on the hill at the bottom of the hill. So that's where all the water is going. But it goes to the right, like you said, it's got a drain, uh, going there. But before you get to his house, it's where it crosses over, goes behind his house. Am I correct?
Yeah, it's a drain coming off of the hill right there. The drain stopped up that day that I was.
Replaced the pipe.
At the grain, yeah.
Replaced the pipe. And all that, incorrect.
What I'm saying is, once that pipe gets plugged, I'm, 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 I'm on winning, Frank. Once, once it plugs up and bags up the street, all I'm saying is, could you put another pipe? So like, when it do plug, when that one plugs up, it has another way to go out. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Does this county property?
The problem is, I've had the engineer out there several times. I've had the engineer out there three or four different times. The engineer was out last Thursday hunting easement, drainage easement to his property. It's not a drainage easement or nothing through that the engineer can find. Mr. Ford, am I correct?
There is no, there is no drainage easement. The city of Nassau Sanitation Sewer easement is only easement that's in Rome, sir.
There is no Adams County drainage easement.
The city of Nassau Sanitation Sewer easement is only easement that's in there.
Is that in the city limits or that? Oh, okay, it is.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Oakland is in the city limits. That's the city. In the back of the houses on Oakland side, on the left-hand side, bags up to his house. So I don't know if that's the city of the county going through there, but Oakland properties bags up to Hammont properties. So Hammont is the county and Oakland is the city. I, I don't know if, if it's city of county where the problem is.
City of county.
Mr. Ford, that's a look.
Something about the back of his house.
I know exactly what it is.
Back of his house. Mr. Ford, that's a look, and it's not an easement.
Okay, there's not an easement, I, you know, I'm sure we'll do whatever we can, if we can. But if we can't do anything because of private property.
That's what I gotta tell them.
All of the pipes, I, I, I came to Mr. Dollar around the first of the, first, first of the month, and I asked for a little dirt to go back there, while my car was washing off and where every drain hooked up on Hammont Street, running down exit on the back of my property. Okay, he said he's got to leave if it's private property or whatever. Two weeks past, on the seventeenth, a tree fell back there, crossed the, crossed the drain. The eighteenth, I think y'all had a meeting here and I reported it then. He comes out and looks, and he says, uh, he's trying to get it to the owner to clean out. He want me to clean out the ditch out there. Every, every ditch in the neighborhood is connected to. Want me to be responsible for it. That's where, that's where all the water runs out right there. And he, he turned his back and he gave me no help. The tree is still there. I, I got most of it up, but the better of it is still in the ditch. My, Lord, my property came, came around.
You, you understand that we really can't go on private property?
I have been through this for three or four years. I had the engineers out three times. They have looked. Engineer tried to explain to him this morning in the back before this meeting. But he said, they're saying, well, I've turned my back. I've not turned my back. I've tried to help him everywhere I can. I told him I would help him if we could, you know, soil dirt, whatever. I cannot bring fresh dirt. I cannot put it on the property. The engineer has looked. This is the second time the engineer's looked and has not found an easement there yet. This is the second time. Am I right, Mr. Ford? So I have not turned my back. I've tried to help him for two to three years, and I can't do anything to get on private property.
Scott.
Scott.
Mr. Slower?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, I remember when I first came, is it, uh, can you research this, figure out? Uh, I know we had an issue before. I know we researched it, and I can't remember until I first came on. Uh, something about if water's coming out of our road late, I don't know if you remember that. Uh, and as long as through our minutes that we've talked and, um, help and correct some of the problem, I'm not, I want you to look within that law because I do know we got twenty-five foot from the center line. Anything over there is considered private property. And we can't cross those twenty-five foot and do private property under, under certain circumstances. I know under emergencies. Uh, do, do you have, do you remember that? If you don't, can we research that?
Yeah, and that we, there's, there's, that's in the K counties of emergencies, that is with the different circumstances. But with, it comes to affecting channels, uh, you know, I'll hack and forward over the form and the statute that we have, that we've done in the past. I'll pull it over to the board and we'll see if that fits in this, in this scenario.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What I want to say is, it's, 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 it's a pipe running across there. It's, it's a, uh, the pipe from, from that, that station, running from that station to Oakland station. It's, it's a, the exit pipe, that's a pipe going out, that sewage going out, right across the ditch. That, that, the waterworks put that in there, and, and, and they put the ditch there. So could you, could you get with them?
So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Scott. I understand you're frustrated. And I, but I do want you to understand.
I was told I'm gonna put the pipe there. Ain't no way, ain't no way they're only gonna put a pipe up, up, up under a sewage line. Ain't no way. And, and all the water off, off of Hammont is going right through that, that drains right there, right, right under that sewage line. So I'm, I'm asking, could you get with the city waterworks or somebody? I know they, they put a pipe there, so guys, they're easing it there.
Did, did you, you went to the waterworks, didn't you?
No, no, I, I didn't go to the waterworks.
Okay.
You talking about the Nassau waterworks or Adams County?
Nassau, just a live station there, and they put a live station, they put it. But Mr. Ford, he showed him the railways this morning. The railway runs around his house, which that live station does not go on his property. Mr. Ford. Did you show him that railway's going around his property and goes down, it comes into the other live station to Oakland? And Mr. Ford's gonna get him a copy of that easement and purchase it when he gets it. It's everywhere right there.
Robbie, if you had to hire somebody to go in there and clear the tree or whatever, I mean, what are you, what are you looking at there? What needs to be done?
You know, I don't know. That's what he asked me about the tree. I told him I couldn't do anything with the tree.
I understand. I'm just asking, just talk.
I don't think he's got it bolted up.
Why would they have all the drains hooked up to that, is what I can't understand.
You understand that was built, like fifty or sixty years ago?
Yeah, 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 it was built a while in fact. Before the house got, before the house was, was, was abandoned, uh, uh, before I bought it, the county was servicing, then it was on the toll. The county was servicing that area back there. It serviced every drain back there. All that's been done is that I bought it, it's, it's a problem.
How long ago we talked about?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
That could have been true because back in the day, they were in the beat system.
Right, right.
We're not in the beat system no more. We're in the unit system. And it's two different systems, you mean? In the beat system, a supervisor pretty much do anything he wanted to do in his area. Now that we in the unit system, we can't do that no more. So it's two different systems that we, that you could be talking about.
I, 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 I have no idea. I, I, all I know is, all the water off of Hammont running exit right there through the, through the creek down there. That's, that's all I know.
The only thing I think need to happen is, Mr. Gaines and Mr. Dollar and you, and call the waterwork out there, and maybe our engineer and, and try to get to the bottom of it like that. Because from what I'm seeing, I think that, that need to happen.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then once the waterwork and the road department and Mr. Gaines and the engineering department, now if all of them saying the same thing.
Mr. Gray.
We can't do nothing.
I want you to go with.
I go with.
I want you to come back on this time because you need to come and you need to go. And I do know you want to help, but I understand. How long you on your house, Mr. Carter?
Been having it over four years now.
Yeah, so I want you to understand. I, I'm definitely, that's why I'm asking.
Have, have you ever had a call about a ditch in front of me or cleaning out or whatever? I, I've been keeping that clean. Am I right, Mr. Mr. Yeah, you know, I mean.
And, and so.
And when I need your help, it's like, hey, I mean, you know, it's, it's like, I'm not a part of it. There ain't no line, you know? And I was bored running down the street. That's what I can't understand.
Listen, I want you to understand this. I don't think nobody here, we have constituents in all of us, we, everybody up here definitely wanna do help. And that's why we here to help. But with the different thing, what they did back years ago, they got a fellow that you might not realize, his name is Chad White. And he have no problem. He's a state attorney. You cannot go on private property without being through that minute because if you, if you go on private property not being through that minute, and much as we wanna help you, but I definitely ain't trying to go to jail. And I'm going to jail, he going to jail, and whoever else go on it.
It's a right of way across there with, with, with the, uh, waterworks.
So what we gonna do is get with the, the waterworks, Mr. Carter. This, I just got with the lawyer. I asked him to look in the minutes because there's certain things that we could do. Uh, I asked him to find a legal way. Now, I hang out with the waterworks. But whatever happened with the waterworks, that was way before that, and that's been for the development here, I don't know. So what I'm saying, that's gonna be our other option.
Right, I was told that it used to be a whole road coming down.
Let's see. Let's see. Well, it sounds, sounds like y'all got a plan. And we go. Okay, I've had a very long, and thank you for your time. All right, thank you. Ashley Johnson?
Okay. Okay, he just told me to do it.
Is there Ashley Johnson here?
Do it by now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, yes, sir. Uh, Millicent, uh, Brandi planned a Minnesota waste process. I'm gonna excuse myself while y'all are talking about that.
Mr. Granny, if you would just make sure that this is replied with the rest of the names.
Wilson. Wilson, we gotta try.
Mr. Granny, if you would just state your name and address. Address and arrest number. Good morning. My name is Millicent Brandi, I'm a citizen of Wisconsin. It's seventy-one thousand, I think, in the city. I would like to know if the application for complete order, those of this and that. Paige, has that been filed?
We received, um, some paperwork from this, I'm not sure if it's blank or blunt. Uh, and I do have a copy of that.
Is that going to be made public?
Yes, if, um, Scott, do we need to have that spread across the limits? We need one case.
No, the, I'm occasioning that you have this part being filed. And, uh, it is a public record, so anyone can come, if ever, whatever. And, uh, that's, that's step one A in the process. The second part is step one B. Um, and it provides that, uh, this board has to review their current plans in this application for amendments and make a couple of, uh, findings. Um, if, if they want to proceed further with the amendment of plan. And, uh, right there, the, you have to examine several factors. Um, but part of that is examining our current plan. If this new amendment would frustrate those efforts. And so we need to look at our current plan. Unfortunately, I didn't get our current plan until Thursday. I've already taken off work to the board. You know, we need to look at the application in the, in the current plan and answer a couple of different questions. That's, that's one B, step one B. If the board approves step one, uh, one B, it goes to step two. Step two, we draft a new solid waste, uh, plan in our amendment. And then step three is where we have to have public comments and have the public initiative into the, into the plan. Now, I say with a caveat, step one B also, uh, in the, I'm going to take this off of MDEQ's guide to amending your solid waste plan. Uh, at, during, in step one B, MDEQ did say if there's issues with, you know, traffic or, or nuisances and things of that nature, then this is also a great time to resolve in step one B. Um, but again, the board would have to take actions after reviewing the application. They may ask additional questions, uh, and answer those things to see if it's something that's appropriate. Uh, and that's where we are at now, advocating through file, this is public record, and so the board needs to act even on it. I have MDEQ's when we have looked at or amended our solid waste plan. We have obtained the services of an engineer, uh, you know, not being a very good, uh, person of, of, about, about these type of, uh, things. I think it might be who, you know, me or our board that also have our engineer engage into the application uh, so we can ask certain questions to the applicant, get some things sorted out, uh, of that nature, so.
Uh, Scott, thank you. Um, so I had, I'm, I have the guidance for modifying a local solid waste management plan which you were referring to. And that was provided to me from MDEQ. And I understand that, uh, you know, you're talking about the different steps. One of those steps will be advertising this in the newspaper, um, and having a public hearing. But the, um, the step one that you were talking about in the sub-part B, there's a demonstration and determination of need. And in that part, there is a, um, it says demonstration to the extent possible that the operation of the proposed facility will not negatively impact the waste reduction strategy of the local government. I don't think taking waste from five states is going to qualify. And so I'm just letting the board know, uh, because this is the controlling document that Scott's been referring to. This is the state law. So, because I know at the beginning of. So, because I know at the beginning of this process, it wasn't very confusing about whether it was gonna be M D, M D E Q or supervisors. And I think we've resolved that now. And so Scott, uh, uh, can I make a motion that this guidance for modifying the local safe, uh, solid waste management plan, uh, be entered into the minutes today?
Nah, I, I want us to have to do that.
Okay.
I, I make the motion that this guidance for modification of local solid waste management plan be entered into the minutes.
Motion by Supervisor Gray, second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, thank you. Um, now, you know, I have furnished photos to the board in the past of construction that's been done out there. I don't know moving forward how you're going to prove that it meets engineering standards if it's already been built. Because those, those, um, someone, an engineer should have been looking at the different steps and signing off on them. It's already built. So I don't know that you can go back and have those inspections. Was the rebar put in correctly? Uh, does the concrete meet those standards? Because it's already been built. And speaking to that, Wes, you're my supervisor. Did you know that I was gonna be arrested?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Because I would appreciate a phone call if you did. So, anything else happens, if you could reach out, I would really appreciate that. Was anyone else aware that, that I was gonna be arrested for trespassing today?
I was aware, I hadn't even known you was arrested.
Okay, well, I received a phone call from the sheriff's office Thursday. And I was informed that there was a ransom warrant that had been issued for me. I do not have a criminal, well, I did not have a criminal record. I don't even have speeding ticket. My father is a retired daddy. I don't break the law. And I certainly would not break the law to prove that someone else is breaking the law. That to me, it would be stupid. Now, uh, this has been going on since February the fifteenth.
That's right.
And, uh, Kevin Wilson filed a complaint with the police. And, uh, no, none of the judges in the county signed the arrest warrant, presumably to prove. So then it was sent to a mid-county where Judge Roger Arnold signed the arrest warrant and placed a five hundred dollar cash bond on misdemeanor trespassing, unheard of. So, this is getting a little ridiculous. And I am worried about the direction that your president is leading this forward. This is a dark road that they were headed in, that you were headed in. And I don't think it's by your, uh, hand that this is happening. But I don't think this is the leadership that we want in this county. Because if a citizen cannot speak out against something that's not being done correctly, and no one's gonna wanna come to the public meetings now, how do we move forward? How do we have public meetings where people are not afraid to come? So I received a call from the sheriff's office. The plan was to arrest me in the meeting here today, and the sheriff would not participate in that. Thank you, Sheriff, I do appreciate your professionalism. Uh, so I came in Friday morning with the understanding that the sheriff would meet me because I was afraid, I could have been to a jail. So I came to the sheriff's office Friday morning, Good Friday. Do you think I can find an attorney on Easter weekend? Should I have to find an attorney on Easter weekend? This is really upsetting. I'm trying not to, I am so devastated and so upset to be treated like this. So, I had to go, I had to put on a prison uniform, I had to have a motion. And I had to be fingered. Because I am coming before you and talking about things that are not being done correctly. It's not like I'm making wild accusations. But let me tell you, ever since I came to that first meeting and there was an article in the paper with my name on it, I, Chick, now, we're in the phone book. We're old fashioned. You know, anybody can look up Chick Brandy and call me at home. My phone has been ringing off the wall with Kevin Wilson's words. Now, I keep most of them to myself because I don't know if they're true. But people have sent me photos, they have sent me information. And I can stand here today and I can swear that I have never been on this property. Because I don't think law. I rent down Shieldsburg, it's a, I mean, it's a public room. But I have more sense than to get out of my car and walk on that property. I, I wouldn't do that. I, I don't, I wouldn't want somebody trespassing on my property. So I would not trespass. But let me tell you why. I was arrested, I had to pay a five hundred dollar cash bond. And Tuesday morning, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I have to go to criminal court. And I know it's hard for y'all to look at me because this is embarrassing. Nobody wants to, you know, it's, it's horrendous. And, you know, I still want to be able to come here and talk to you about this process. And I am thankful that Scott and that we're on the same page, that the controlling document is from M D E Q. And that there's a state law and there is a plan. Because now y'all know what to do and you can be put at ease, like we're following the law. But this needs to be a transparent process. This, I do not need to be arrested at a meeting for coming and talking about or speaking truth to your president. That is not, I, I, I'm sure y'all are embarrassed, or I, I guess, I don't know. Not embarrassed is the right word, but I'm sure you're upset that this is happening. I, I, for once, I really don't have the words. I, maybe I, I'm just too emotionally upset that I was truthful like this. But now I am a criminal and I have to go hire a criminal to physically train. And they don't work for free. And I have to go to court tomorrow morning. And, you know, I, I just wanted to share that with y'all because I think, I think you have a, I, I think you have someone whose personal wants are clouding his professional judgment. And there was no proof on the, on the report filed with the police. That's why none of the judges here wanted to do anything with it without having a hearing. Because there's no proof, just an allegation. And now, if you Google my name, the first thing that comes up is that mugshot. And let me tell you, I don't look good in yellow. It's not pretty. I, I look like a sixteen year old, mother of two, and grandmother of a four year old who is visibly shaken and upset. And if that's what Kevin was trying to do, was to upset me, congratulations, Kevin, you did it. If you're trying to get any respect from anyone in this county, you failed. And when Amy Blunt came before you and said, we just wanna, we, we wanna get rid of the fear factor. Well, Amy, that's not the way to do it. Because now everybody in the county is gonna be afraid to come to your public meetings, to come to your meetings and, and complain about anything. It's wrong. And I am, I am just devastated that that is where we're going in this county. I, I, I mean, Wes, what, what am I supposed to do?
You know, I mean, I told you, day one, the first time y'all all showed up this way, this board had no knowledge of what was going on.
I know.
They were going to vouch for that. And they're still.
But guess what? Somebody wrote the check for all that concrete. It's not hard to find out. And so I guess now I'll have to go hire an attorney. And we'll have to file some subpoenas and some, have some depositions. We'll find out who wrote the checks for that, all that concrete that was poured. And if it's your president, then we've got a problem. I mean, I'm here to do this follow the lines. But if it's not your president and there's someone else building that facility, they need to get it permitted. This is not a secret. This is supposed to be done in the open and not where citizens are threatened. And arrested for speaking the truth to power. This is America. We can say, hey, I don't think you're doing this the right way, and not get arrested. So, I just, I mean, I know that every time I show up, y'all, it's, it's news, there, there's something new. But I also wanna thank Jen, thank you for your coverage, your fair coverage of the facts and what's going on. And it's important that we have a community paper that gives everyone, the, all of the details. Scott, did you know about this?
Uh, only from what I've read in the newspaper.
Okay, but you didn't, like, from February the fifteenth until I was arrested on Friday, you weren't aware of, of this happening?
I was not aware that, that someone was going to sign an affidavit now or anything like that, but.
I'm sorry, wait, what?
I was not aware of that or, or anything like that, other than the newspapers that have.
Okay. So you're saying that you were not aware that Kevin was trying to have you arrested from February the fifteenth?
Because I, I, I've not spoken, nor should be, or whoever's spoken to Kevin about, about this application. This review of this does not involve in the ultimate discussion. And on emails that I've sent with the, M D E Q and so forth, the communications I have is not part of the, is not part of the discussion.
Thank you, Doctor. Also, I have a request as a citizen. I've noticed that every meeting I've attended, and I don't know if that's, what happens usually is there is usually some law enforcement here, like someone from the sheriff's office. I don't know if that's something that y'all did purposely or it's.
Required.
It's required.
We can't make it without.
I would, as a citizen, because of what has happened, I would like Kevin Wilson to not wear a firearm when he comes in here. I find that intimidating and wrong, and I do not think, we have law enforcement here, that he needs to have a gun in his hip. It's, it, I am afraid, I don't like it. Today, when he walked behind me, I stood up. I don't understand he behind me with a gun in his hip. That is very frightening for me. And so I don't know what the state law is, Scott, but I, I, I would really feel bad. I don't see anyone else, does anybody else have guns?
We, we're not, we're not allowed to, the city legislature to bring firearms. There are many parks and, and, uh, courts.
Say that again, Scott.
Are we not allowed to permit firearms, except in parks and in courts? There's, there's two, because that's the law came out a few years ago.
Sheriff, at the end of the day, you can, uh, have a firearm in, in, in the boiler room and where else?
But in the courthouse, except in the courtroom, uh, at public parks, you think we decided to refer to that, which we have done. But there's a area, uh, all the K pound that the military will pick up on their kitchen. Okay, would you like to?
Well, maybe I can just make a request, Kevin, as a person, and as a private citizen, please not wear this firearm, if I'm on the issue, because I find it very troubling.
Mr. Gray, your name?
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, could have been my mom. Could have been my wife. Could have been my grandma. This gotta stop. I mean, people know what's right, but they don't, they don't all the time do what's right. And the ones that do know what's right, you raise your hand. So, you are responsible for telling a person when they're not right. And if we don't do that, we just, it's, it's bad as the person is doing it, in my opinion. Everybody know, before I even found out that it was Kevin's property, that when you, when you bring up the landfill, people gonna be mad because they don't want landfills close to where they live. And, well, we got to realize this, people. We are living in a certified retirement community. We got a lot of people that go work their jobs and come back to Adams County to live. And there's certain kind of things that I think we just don't need in this county because of the health reasons, uh, 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 some of our older citizens and our younger citizens. Uh, I'm not knocking, uh, Mary's health, but, uh, our health facility, you step their game up a little bit, but. I don't know what to say, I, I just apologize, Ms. Brandy, to the Brandy family, whoever else involved.
Sure. My friends are here.
Imagine if it was one of y'all moms.
It could be.
How would you feel?
Depends on what you say.
I already know how you feel.
Um, I would just, you know, like I say, on behalf of me as a member of the board of supervisors, that, you know, I sincerely apologize, um, as a person, but, but I had no prior knowledge of any of that, I actually have had, and I speak for the board, I don't think anybody else sit here had any prior knowledge of the things that going on. And that's why when we do have, uh, documentation like that, that I have, don't have a problem making a motion or seconding the motion because I do want a fair and right process. And as a supervisor, and that was one of my constituents right there that you seen before you, I never have a problem, and I wanna say, as long as I sit here, I know I got three more years here. This is a public meeting. And do not be afraid to come to public meetings. That's how we keep our citizens, it's a, a checks and balances system. Just like right there, we had one beforehand that we said there that we were asking to pray for our, we can't. On the same way, you got one asking us to follow up, that's what we need as a board. That's the only way we gonna keep Adams County in, in, and from the government, from the United States government down to the local government going forth, we gotta have a checks and balances. So, what I would say, I, I, I can't words can explain it because I can't tell you how you feel, how your family feel. I can only imagine, though I would ask you to not stop coming to public meetings. And any other citizen that listen, if you got something that's on your mind, the only way that we keep our good checks and balances is you gotta participate.
Thank you.
Ms. Brandy, I have to say this, um, I really apologize because I feel like crying when you start, I feel like crying, you know. I got a call this morning from a constituents. And they said, I am sorry you have to go through what you've been to go through this morning. And I said, what are you talking about? And so they started telling me about what was in the paper. So I didn't even see that, just like that. And to get a call of someone else to tell me about something like this before I even get in a meeting was heartbreaking. And, um, like Supervisor Gray said, if it's my mother, my sister, or my grandmother, or even one of my children, I would be devastated. So, I'm apologizing, um, for this. And I'm used to, on this board as leadership, before anything like that happens, I think a public hearing needs to be called to let the people know what's going on. Something needs to be said. And you just don't sit there and put something in a place where you got people that like Supervisor Gray said, that affects the health. that affects the health of someone, and you got young, you got the old, and that affects the health. You, you know, when your path going through failure, that land was there, you can smell it.
Yes, it was.
It smells.
I have a letter from M D E Q that is a cease and desist letter to Riverbend, who used to own that Jefferson County land. Because a company called Nature's Way Environmental was dumping oil-filled waste without a permit. So if you look at the Secretary of State's website, the owner of Nature's Way Environmental was Kevin Wilson. So he's already done this in, in Jefferson County. And so, when he said at that meeting in October, "We used to do this in Jefferson County, but they made us stop", those were his words, it's in the paper. That's what he's talking about. And that is a letter from M D E Q to Riverbend, saying, "Nature's Way cannot dump oil-filled waste in the Jefferson County landfill without a permit." Who's building a facility without a permit? Who is having grandmothers arrested without proof? This is not the direction Adams County wants to go in. And so, this is not new for Kevin, but I think it's new for all of you. And I, I, something's gonna have to be done, because this is law. It's against the law, and this is not the first time for him. And he said with his own words, and this is a letter from M D E Q. It, this, this, that's the bad thing, when you start doing a little research, and you reach out to people, well, they're gonna give you information. That's all I've done as a citizen, is to find out what is going on, and just come before you and talk about it. Because it puts Adams County and the Board of Supervisors in a very bad position. It makes you liable for his actions. And you're not getting the full story from your president. So like you said, it's not like he said, heads up, I'm having this grandmother arrested, and just want y'all to be on board with it. None of y'all knew. You had to get blindsided, like you said, this morning by a phone call. Or to come in here and watch me try not to cry, because I'm afraid to come to a public meeting now.
But I'm gonna tell you, don't be afraid to come up in here.
Well, I, you know, I called the sheriff this morning and asked him if I would be safe. And he said, "Yes, I will be there, you will be safe." I know, I was, that was the plan, was to, to meet in front of all of you.
I just wanna say, I just wanna say that, you know, like I stated earlier, when, when you all came the first time, was the first time the board heard about this, and I believe this board as a whole that day told you that moving forward, the proper steps will go, we will take the proper steps to make sure this is handled correctly, public hearing, etc. So, I'm sorry for what happened to you. It is your right to come to that podium, it's everybody's right to come to that podium and speak on what you believe in. Because everybody sitting at this table works for everybody in this room.
Thank you, Wes, that's very good of you.
And, you know, Mr. Chick's called me a dozen times in the past on other issues, and I'm, and we've always spoken. I've always returned and saw. It's an open book.
Yeah, you, you've done a great job.
And I'm here to assist in any way I can, but just, just so everybody knows, the podium's there. Public comments is there for, for a reason, and it's for the public.
Well, let me tell you, that was not the welcoming committee I expected, to come, come before you to speak and then get arrested. So I think moving forward as a county, this needs to stop. Because I may not be the only person that's gonna be arrested. But the good thing is, at the end of the day, I have the support of my family, and my friends, and leaders in the community, and the sheriff, because he would not participate in this far, because there's no proof, because I don't bring the law. I, I make sure that before I bring a document for you, that it is a legal document, and it is a good document. Otherwise, I mean, I get things sent to me all the time. I don't bring those to you, because they're not, they're, they're not true, they're not something that I can bear. So, you know, I try to present facts to y'all. And, and I think I've been pretty, uh, professional about the way I've done these things. And I, I've not been a flatterer, and I have not, there have been some false statements that Mr. Wilson has made, that I have classified as false statements, because he made them to the paper. And they, then I showed that, well, that's not true. You know, he said that there wasn't construction going on out at that facility, and there, I, there is construction. There's major construction. And I don't, if he did not pay for that concrete work, which that should be pretty simple to find out, then whoever did pay for it, and whoever is building out there, it may not be the person that filed the permit. So now we gotta start over. You know, that's all I'm asking, is that this should be done, follow the law, and be done in a transparent way, because it protects you as a board. And thank y'all for your apologies, but you are not the ones that owe me an apology. Kevin Wilson owes me an apology. And filing a false report is against the law. Thank y'all for your time.
Sheriff, yes. I know y'all are having a hard job, but, you know, so, the way that the law has set up, anybody that called and make a report, it's gonna be great, and y'all gonna come and arrest you without proof?
Anybody can call and have a report done, and anybody can go, the way, go down to the justice court and be an affidavit, happy in honor of a warrant, and they can have you arrested, that is correct. That's not something I set up, it's been in place for over, ever since the beginning of the justice court. And it's not something that I agree with, but unfortunately, you know, we have our role in those things. And that's why when this happened with Ms. Grant, and I understand, you know, President Wilson has his side, she has her side. But, and we have a job to do in the middle, that's why I wanted to make sure that we handled her the way we did, and, and let her keep her dignity the best that we could with, with a situation like this. Because it's, it's her word against his word, it's nothing that the sheriff's office investigated, but it came to our table, and just like we do with everything else we deal with, and when it comes to our table. You know? But we tried to handle the situation the best we could, seeming as sensitive of a situation as it is. And I understand you hurting, and I, trust me, I seen the pain on Ms. Grant's face when I was with her, when, you know, when we were booking her in. So I, I certainly understand that, and Kevin has it, you know, President Wilson has his point of view, he feels like his rights are being violated. And so, in the past, what we done is try to set these things up for show calls here, and so it, you know, people who have been, you know, where the evidence is not there, or we try to intervene so they don't get the criminal record that Ms. Grant has gotten. In this case, you know, that, that kinda got passed on through all the judges, and it moved all the way over to Aiden County. And when it came back from Aiden County, it came back with a five hundred dollar cash bun on it, which is, you know, I'm, I'm not knocking any judges, but for somebody who's never been arrested before, you know, it's, it is what it is. It's that judge's opinion and how they do business.
You gotta live.
Yeah, no, well, no judges, and that's what I'm gonna tell you, no judges, all the judges do business different. I know our local justice court judges normally would give a five hundred dollar bun, cash, or, you know, bear's bun, or will be allowed to recog it. In this case, that wasn't the case for her, it was strictly a five hundred dollar bun. So, like I say, we did the best to let her keep her dignity while making sure, um, President Wilson had his day in court as well, and, and this is the results of that.
Mr. Flash, did you have something you'd like to say?
Uh, two things, really. Uh, I'm Representative Flash, I've been a proud citizen of Adams County since nineteen ninety-six, where I was advised by a group of people, organized, uh, New Covenant Presbyterian Church, that was a major adventure. I retired from that, I continue to serve small churches wherever possible. Uh, I make two observations. I am enormously gratified to be able to be here and to listen to patriots at work. We have so many places where our nation entrusted institutions have been shaken to the very core. It is hard to turn around and find something that's reliable, because doors fly off, big lights in the sky. The trusted institutions showing weakness at every turn. And it is a very refreshing thing, an experience for me, to come here and to see a process that became dignified and counted and seminal. And I think causing a shift, a paradigm shift, in the way we are governed and who we vote to govern us. What has taken place here today is extraordinary. And what you have done, what you voiced from your hearts, showed a lot of heart immunity for this community, and for people that try to speak in the freedom that we are granted constitutionally, and make their points clear without a lot of razziness, for dignity and, and good presentations of facts. And we're seeing court systems operate according to rules that we may not, and, and laws that we might not be comfortable with. And your response causes me to make a recommendation. Because of the dignity, because of the decency that concerns for a part of our county were voiced by a citizen of this county. And because of the affront that she has received, and the falsehoods that came her way, and the fact that you have been compelled by her own calm testimony, that she has been a person that has suffered a great social and personal injury. And because of the way you have processed what you have received this morning, in a way that shows support of her cause and a way for better treatment in the future, when people do stand up and speak in that, as a constitutional and a civic responsibility, you're in support of that, it's so clear, and it's so gratifying to see. I would urge that this board contemplate a strong rebuke to the person that was responsible for this grave offense. It doesn't need filthy courts, it needs to know that people react by heart and by intelligence, and by the documents that govern our constitutional life, that this ought not to have occurred. And I would recommend that you contemplate in due time, and by the time of this next meeting, be able to vote for a, 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 uh, overture of rebuke to what has taken place against a citizen freely speaking before this board of supervisors. Furthermore, I would strongly recommend that time be taken to reflect a little bit more, and more traffic, more deeply than we've already observed here, that you've taken up, and the thoughts that you've given, that you really consider marking Millicent as an outstanding citizen, that had the courage, that should she, I think that she should be commended for standing up as a citizen with no threats of what could possibly have taken place. And that you honor her as a means of showing balance between those two positions that collided in a very gracious way today. And I really thank you for what you've done. I thank, I thank this room for being here today, that I counted a high, one of the highest privileges of my life, to have observed you in action. I'll go home, I got a great week ahead, this is a wonderful start, and I thank all of you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Flash. Does anyone else have anything they would like to say? All right, at this time, we're gonna move on to, yeah. Yeah, departmental reports, but I'm gonna ask him.
Just need me a little more confidence on that.
You ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I don't know, we got two, I mean, what were you gonna?
Yeah, we got three.
Good morning, the name is Price, Purchase Clerk for Adams County Board of Supervisors. We will have the semi-annual bid for the Rose Park Supplies on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
The next board meeting, fourteen, right? Yeah, um, do we need? Yeah, we're not, and you said the twenty what?
April twenty-fifth.
We won't be here until February the, I mean, uh, May the, what?
Ten o'clock, April twenty-two. He's doing a bid.
Okay, we're gonna, well, best bid is in May, first meeting.
Yes, it's our person makes.
Okay.
That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Ginn?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll ask you a question. Can we, what bids you take?
Semi-annual.
So, do that, go for asphalt and all that too. I'm gonna have to say this. I've been noticing all these trucks going up and down the highway, we sit in the matching room, and, and, and it's amazing that they had to go outside of, of what we normally do to get asphalt because of the price of the asphalt in this community. Uh, I, right, I don't know what we can do, I don't know how we can do it, but the city and the county need to get together and send a serious message that we can't get charged double for asphalt, because we don't have the money like that. When you can go to Hayley, Hurst, or wherever they bringing all this stuff in from for a cheaper price, they, they, they gotta, they gotta try to work with us like we working with them. I mean, uh, this is tough times, and I understand that, but at the end of the day, everything gone up. But it's amazing, you can go a few miles over to get the cheese, so, uh, we gonna have to do some work, thank you.
All right, that's all you have?
That's it, thank you.
Ms. Ginn?
Good morning, I just need approval on a new tire, it's part-time, because Joanne allows me to.
I've got it in my hand, for, uh, twelve dollars a hour, deputy clerk.
Yes.
Annual rate of eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve. Approved by Ms. Grant.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor? Motion approved. Okay, is that all you need?
Yes.
All right.
I said it's part-time?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Bell.
And, and, he now on one dispatch. I have a report for the month of March the first to the thirty-first. Adams County S L had four hundred and seventy-five homes, N P D had one thousand, one hundred and seven, and one, National Fire Department had twenty-eight sixteen in the county. Also, we have a budget amendment for the renovation of the building in fourteen Fifty Streets. streets. Uh, the last meeting we had, it was stated the contractor has to be certified or whatever, but we checked into that and they said it has to be fifty thousand or more. It's almost two thousand. Have to get it approved, so it's moved forward, renovation of the building.
Scott. Mr. Slatter. Okay, oh, so, uh, she is correct. Oh, there, there's, there's, there seems to be a dog howling in the background or a small child, wow.
That's, that's, that's a one-year-old.
Oh, okay, okay, wow. So, you say, she is correct, that she, that the contractor doesn't need to be, uh, certified?
That's correct for, for the amount less than fifty thousand. The statute was weird, there's a definition section, it says you had to have, it said you go back to the definition section, there's, there's fifty thousand, it's a different point, so we got that, uh, under the same, um, under the same category.
Okay. All right, do we need a, pass a motion?
Or, yeah. I think, I think two, I think Stephanie two, to see if it was within her budget.
Okay. She prepared a budget for you. Okay, the money's there.
So, so someone have come in, was it amended? Okay, so how much it is?
Revised funding, there's two figures here, one for forty-five hundred, one for thirty-five hundred.
Oh, we had just moved.
Yeah, we just moved it from my budget.
Okay, so I need approval for this budget, then, on, uh, nine-one-one.
So long.
Moved by Ms. Hudson's, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Wow.
All right, motion carried. Okay, thank you.
Hold on, folks, I got a question for you. Is there a way for you all to start tracking, like, the calls that we take in the city? Because I hear them numbers every month and I know it's not telling the real tale of what we do. You got the four hundred that comes to us, but we get a ton transferred to us where we go deal with it in the city. So, I'm just kind of curious, is, is it possible for us to keep up with those numbers?
Sheriff, glad you, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Glad you brought that up because to me, it's just one supervisor, we getting outside of, of, of what we supposed to be getting outside of because how many, uh, dispatches you had before they combined?
I mean, it was five, I believe, it was five.
You had five just in your department?
Just in the sheriff's office, yes.
Okay, the city had like ten or eleven, whatever the case may be. So, the thing was that they was gonna combine and the city was gonna pay the majority of the money because they had the majority of the people coming in. Now, we basing everything on how many calls a, a, an individual get, but it, it's the same thing with fire. Fire wasn't set up by how many calls a person get, fire was set up by Mayor Brown to help the city, because I was open to, to help the city to, to get fifteen more firefighters and, and it was a cost for that. It wasn't a cost for how many fires you fighting in the county. So, we changing this thing around to how many calls and, and wanna pay by the calls. That ain't, that ain't the way we supposed to be doing it.
And supervisors, Gray, I, I do wanna say this, if y'all need record of it, we do keep record of how many hours we spend in the city now, because I knew this was coming down the road and so, chief, am I wrong, about a year ago, we start keeping up with those hours, kinda? We got a lot of them then, let me put it like that.
Well, I, I tell you, there is a local agreement out there and like Supervisor Gray say, so that could be poured to that local agreement of how bad it's supposed to be.
Certainly gives us a, a little bargaining chip, a pretty good bargaining chip in the, in the, another thing on the fire, it says twenty-eight of those are in, or, or in the county or whatever, the fires, and I'm like, are these grass fires or these full-blown structures fires or?
I don't know.
That's a, that's a interesting point, because if you, we're going on trash call, you know, and they're including, it's, it's a big, oh, we, we gotta take, send a fire truck out there, you know, and, and it's really nothing to it, which, you know, when, when we get a report on, on ambulance services, it's always, this is a no-call, nobody, no transportation because these people left the scene, it, it, they all have a thousand calls and they only transport three hundred people. So, it is like, you know, you really need to get down to the nuts and bolts of what we're, what we're actually talking about sometime.
And that's why I was saying, I don't, I don't want the citizens to think that we had, take issue with that, but we take a lot on with the same amount of staff that we have with sheriff's office. We do the county and we do a lot in the city too as well. And so, what I was looking at was bringing in an analyst to see just how much we do through, because I know we keep certain numbers, but I know those numbers are, are not even telling the tale of how much we really do in the, in the city. And we don't want the city to, you know, the people, residents of the city to feel like sheriff's officers don't wanna do this, but I can, I will openly say that it's a lot on us when we already short and we gotta take up and clean up, and I hate to use that word, but we chalking through the pile like, like what Granny said this morning, truth, truth is, we do a lot, a whole lot. And, and when you start talking numbers, I believe that, you all get to that.
The thing is, we're not getting reimbursed for that, are we? We're just, you're just, uh, we're just doing this for free.
Yes.
Basically.
That is correct.
But, I mean, it's for the citizens, but when you get right down there, we're, this has to be run like a business and, and, and on one end, we're getting charged for fire, we want to be charged hefty for fire protection while we're supplying most of the services for keeping the, the city safe as well as the county. So, it's, it is an interesting charge off, but, uh, okay, we'll certainly keep that in mind, Ms. Bell, and thank you. Who, who's next?
Morning, boy.
Hi.
Samuel Mina, veteran service officer for the county, uh, have a couple things I wanna bring to you this morning. Uh, one, we have an event going on on, uh, Saturday, April the sixth, it's a meeting street that the, uh, Home Hero is putting on for the, uh, so all the veterans that they have contact with, will be able to meet me. And it's, uh, at one-on-seven Jefferson Davis Boulevard from nine o'clock to four thirty. So, if you guys wanna attend, uh, you want to look into the tent.
Where's that at?
That is, uh, right across from the Ford dealership behind Little Tokyo, it's their museum.
Oh, okay, all right.
The next thing is, uh, next week, as you guys know, I will be down on the coast for training. And, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, just remind you of that. And they have live with VetPro. Say that, and the only thing I'm waiting on is just, uh, my computer to turn on, so once that comes in, it will be live and I'll be able to help the veterans of our board in what I'm able to do now.
Okay.
And, uh, thank you for your support.
All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, listen, I, I wanna thank you for, uh, going over to the guy that just got out of nursing home and really couldn't come to you, you went visiting him, I wanna thank you for doing that, man. Because you didn't have to do it like that.
Oh, yeah, that, that's one person, but if they come to me, I gotta go visit them.
Appreciate it, man.
All right, thank you.
Morning. Good morning. Uh, on me was side, me was at, I mean, just EMA side, me was at approved the twenty-five thousand dollars for showers and just for reimbursement. So, just to let y'all know that.
Okay, so twenty-five thousand of the total construction cost for the shower.
Most county paid, two, they have reimbursed twenty-five thousand.
So, Mr. President, let me ask you a question. Uh, you remember when Brad was in, in here the other day discussing showers? Uh, I thought Lynette was doing a shower.
They seen what they were.
I thought she was doing showers at the baseball field, she doing both of them?
Thought they were set wrong by David.
I thought Lynette was trying to get money for the, for the locker, the locker rooms and over there, so she doing the showers and the baseball field?
Yeah, because remember Brad was.
Yeah, we talking Brad, we ain't talking her.
Well, she was out that day and I think Alan.
I think that was two separate, two different brands.
So, she doing both?
I believe so, I think one was through the USDA, USDA, and one was through the wildlife fishes and parks.
Okay, well, now, didn't Brad say you couldn't do?
USDA, that was some.
We said we'd see which one we got.
So, we got this one first, so do that mean she gonna have to continue to try to pursue, uh, the money for, to save from since they already got, because he say you couldn't use, uh, both of the monies, right?
That's what I heard.
Now, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, tell Brad to give Lynette and since he already got the money, then they'll figure it out.
Oh, that work.
We might not get the money with Lynette.
Uh, and also, far side, Brad Smith with the State Fire Marshal Office, he's asking for a copy of the resolution and a copy of a, uh, city and county fire agreement for fire protection. Because they had, they got filled out the form for the rural fire truck acquisition, so he asked that also.
Is that what this is? Scott, did you ask me to put in the folder for you?
Is that what's that now?
The State and the City Department of Insurance Division of the Fire Services Development Rule Fire Truck Acquisition.
Yeah, that's what I have to put in there.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
But what he's asking for is.
Is the agreement that we don't have.
When we're still working on.
Right.
Yeah. Well, the agreement is, is still in effect, it's a month-to-month deal, that's, that's warrant of that.
So, we just giving the one we already have?
It's the one that we already have, that's, that's.
Okay.
It's not expired, so then you understand that, it's, you have to stay in that back month-to-month.
Do we need to get Kevin to sign this?
To look at the application?
Yes.
Yeah, make that application over.
Okay, do we need, uh, approval?
Absolutely.
All right, I need a motion to sign this, um.
So long.
Ms. Gray, second by Ms. Hudson's, any comment?
Yeah, do you have any comments for you?
Uh, I can say, only thing I can say, I can say, look, on those PD, so what they were saying, that the agreement has to be at least forty-five years. Boy, they might approve, they might approve that, I got.
What agreement you talking about?
The in-local agreement filed.
Well, this is a running agreement that has not, uh, ended, so I'll say.
So, I mean, it's be on them, if they have a.
Just gonna continue to document.
Do all of them.
What, Mr. President, what, what he means it has to be four or five years, sometimes you might just say we wanna do a three-year agreement.
If it's three years, he might accept that, I'm just saying, that's what, that's why they, their provision for the rip out, they're trying to protect the counties from that, let you say you start your own department, then they grant to go somewhere else or the city get the grant, and then they leave and then that's some, that's a grant for the county. So, they're just trying to protect the counties though, somebody's just getting a grant just to get a truck again, take off, start your own.
I found, to my knowledge, the only thing we was doing since we wasn't using the grant this year, we was allowing them to use the grant, but that just for one year, right? For this grant, that ain't for all the rest of them coming behind, and we got to approve that.
Yeah, it, it, it's a process that the state has to go through too. And, okay, I've been saying.
Hello, President?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, it's always that y'all, that the city could apply through us. If our current agreement is not good enough for the state to afford a grant, we didn't guarantee that they would get the grant, we just said y'all could apply for it. That's the way I see it, but if they don't get it, that's not our fault, we, we only can show them what we got, you know? And if they get the grant, that's, that's okay, if, if, we don't, we do a different agreement or whatever, you know, it's just for here, if it comes, come and do it next year, we'll fly it into reach.
Okay. All right.
As long as we do our, you know, it's up to the state to approve it or not.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? I'd have most caring, thank you. Oh, Lord.
It can't be hard, I come. I have three personal property and one real property, uh, petition. Ruby Saber, over on Brookfield, her home burned and we didn't notice, so we're asking to remove it off the road. And actually, there's, there won't be any money if I, because she's over sixty-five and it was a thing, but I have to have a report to remove it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to remove it.
Same.
Motion, uh, Mr. Ginn's second by Ms. Hudson's, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, most caring.
Natchez Chrysler Dodge Jeep, Natchez Nissan, and Natchez Chevrolet. Every one of them turned in the wrong inventory for this year. Uh, when she called me in September, late February, I asked for the, of the income tax for all the three businesses and she gave them to me, so, uh, it's a large difference in the inventory, because the inventory, the CPA turned in was, I don't know, to bring you out of the bills and not the parts and oil and tires and stuff. And I finally figured out how to do the, the paperwork and, uh, Natchez Chrysler Jeep is wanting to reduce their assessment from six hundred and eighty-nine thousand to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand because the inventory was wrong.
On, on which, which part?
On, on new vehicles.
Yeah, she, she, you know, you buy tax, and that's actually where you pay your Apple on tax for, for the vehicle. When she rendered the inventory this year.
That's eight, that's less than eight cars.
No, this, this is the assessment, assessed after depreciation, after fifteen percent.
There's some new air for you.
No, usually, they were new, she turned in a little over a million dollars in inventory. And she wants to reduce it from what? Uh, from six hundred and eighty-nine thousand to a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. In other words, her, her actual inventory should not have been of the vehicles. How about those car numbers? Uh, Natchez Chrysler Dodge, Natchez Chevrolet, and Natchez Nissan. Natchez Toyota has already paid their bill and it was actually, uh, wrong too, but I told you there was nothing we could, we could do.
Mr. President, I apologize, but why they want us to discount?
The lady, the, the CPA, when she turned, when she rendered last year on the rendition, the inventory, she put all the vehicles on, she put the vehicles inside the inventory and you're not supposed to because the Apple on tax comes from the tax. All she was supposed to give me was oil, tires, parts, and that type of thing.
So, Mr. President, let me ask you a question. So, the previous year, how much did they pay?
Oh, it was a lot to ask them, what we were asking them this year, I mean, if you want to know what they paid for their.
Well, I'm trying to kind of figure out if, if she made a mistake and put all that on it this year, then the year before that she didn't make a mistake, how much was it then, then you can get a comparison of, of, of what's going, me, I can, like that.
As far as the tax, like, uh, for Natchez Chrysler Dodge, they paid around, uh, I think it was nineteen thousand dollars last year.
And how much was it this year?
With the inventory, it would be a hundred and fifteen thousand. The twenty-three inventory that was wrongly assessed.
Mr. President, Scott?
Cause I'm here.
Uh, have we passed that deadline yet?
That's the deadline to, uh, reduce, uh, we, it's, I think the first meeting in August is when it comes. They're all discretionary with the board to reduce it.
So, is this for this year or last year?
Twenty-three.
For twenty-three taxes, it was due February first, twenty-twenty-four.
Well, that's what I'm asking, about last year. That's what you talking about, right?
Yes.
So, the deadline for last year is when?
For discretionary, it is, it, the first meeting in August, I believe, so, last, in August.
Uh, of twenty-three or, or twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you're, you're behind, and it basically mirrors, the discretionary mirrors the statute for when we reassess, or begin reassessing for twenty-seven.
Okay, so what is the reduction she's asking, they're asking for?
That's a move.
Yeah. The difference is a hundred and ten thousand dollars in actual money.
Actual money?
Actual money, that's actual money.
It's gonna be taken off what we've already.
No, we have not, yes, which is, but.
Well, it was probably, the county's portions, probably went thirty-five thousand, forty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
What is, what is the solution to that? Or is there one? Excuse me, uh?
Tony, Scott?
Mm-hmm. Scott, what's the solution to that? I mean, we, do we have a choice?
They irrationally assess their property, basically, they, they did the wrong rendition, and they're asking us to reduce it because it was irrationally done. I believe it's discretionary.
Is that all of it combined, or? Or is that just the start?
In all, about two seventy. Two for a month.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of our budget that we've already approved. Uh, is that something we need to take under advisement?
Yeah, we do.
Sounds like it's an end of decision to take that under advisement. Uh, so that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna take that under advisement.
Get something ninety thousand, uh, okay.
You say ninety thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take it under advisement for now, you want to move on to something? That, that we can deal with?
I'm good.
I said it could be hard.
Thank you.
So Scott, can you hear me?
Sir, yes, sir.
So, when it say that on the first Monday in July, the board is being responsible for the law, to make sure that all assessments are equal. After equalizing the road, the board opened up for the public inspection. The board took about, then act at the board of equalization in a hearing assessment appeal at the August meeting. What do that mean? That's something different?
No, it's the same. So there's, the ban to originalization when you're doing August, and then from August until the next August, there's discretionary authority to change the assessment upon the application by the taxpayer for the application of the tax assessment. And it has to be on cer- certain grounds. One of the grounds is that the property's been doubly assessed. And so what, what, these, these cars are assessed differently. Uh, they're not assessed, you know? As part of the inventory, it's, they're already taxed, or even simply they didn't tax by too much, and so, which is supposed to grant that they do.
Now you confusing me. Now you confusing me, because they say after the assessment delivered a tax roll to the board on or before the first Monday in July, any change to this assessment must be made by the board supervisor. So we gonna table this until you get here, where we can get a little better understanding of what's going on, because I may be reading the wrong thing.
Yeah, and that's, I, I, for, for y'all to take it under advisement, although it is familiar with it, I want to, y'all are asking whether it's discretionary, or whether it's mandatory. I understand discretionary, but I want to check and be sure and see if there are options, maybe talks with that successor, because it is, we do adjust these throughout the year, but this is a pretty significant adjustment, and it will really impact us, and we're already kind of here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blair?
All right, I, all I have is a, I've got a cash request for our home project, the Missy Home Corporation. Uh, the asbestos and, and lead based inspections have been done, so I've got the twenty-five hundred dollar uh, invoice for Advanced Environmental Consultants. Uh, Scott's done the title opinions, so I've got a two thousand dollar invoice for Scott Slower for legal fees, and then twenty-eight hundred dollars for Southwest Plankton Development District for administrative fees, and this all comes out of the grant.
Does that count, Brad?
It is.
Okay.
Come over there.
We need a, an approval for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make the motion to, uh, approve the payment.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Miss Hudson. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I have to ask for that though, because, let me tell you, I get some calls from that.
Yeah, my next step is, while we advertise for.
When am I, when am I gonna get this?
While we advertise for contractors, his next one will.
I'm sorry, to two years.
Yeah, well, we have the contract last February, February a year ago. So we've had the clear environmental and all that stuff, but yes, it's been doing slow. But we're finally, I think I can advertise for contracting now.
Will you please let us know when they started delivering, or what they gonna do to these homes?
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
What's all that? Thank you.
I have a question for President.
Yes.
Um, Alan.
Yeah.
I don't know if you noticed, but you always here last meeting, so are we ready to go with the applications that we are ready to submit, called the repairs?
Can I get back with you on that? I'm assuming we are, but Lynette is actually heading up that, she had to go through another, four meetings in another town this morning, another county. So I'll get back with you on that.
That's almost.
All right, I should have asked her that before she left this morning.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just two quick things. We're getting a resolution off as we speak to, uh, extend our lease agreement from twenty years to thirty years, review some, actually any infrastructure in the future. So, we're getting that off today, and, uh, Rock Johnson and Sam Minz is working on that for us. Uh, the CJCC, uh, our criminal justice group met, had a great meeting, um, discussed mental health and the new group that is here, and we're coordinating efforts with, uh, with the judges, with, uh, police, sheriff, and, uh, mental health group. And then, uh, the sheriff and I have met with, uh, David to, uh, look at the property that, that has been given to us, and, um, he is setting up a visit, or a site visit, to a jail that would be comparable to what we're looking at. And when I find out that date, I'll send that to you, because I think you might be interested in, in going to that, it'll be a little field trip. And, um, trying to look at all different options for funding sources, that's why I'm glad Bert came today, I think that's a different option. So we might want to check it out, and, um, see if anything else. I believe that's it. So just wanted to keep you up with that.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, boy.
Morning.
First thing I have is, uh, two school dirt requests, one at twenty-five White Road, which is gay, and one at three eighty-eight Crankville Road, Mr. Rose.
Okay, I got them.
Go move.
The move by Mr. Gray, second by Mrs. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, eyes have it.
Second thing I have is, uh, illegal dump sites, uh, you should have those, President Wilson, is, uh, three thirty on Highway Eight Four Number One. Take Road and Highway Eight Four Number One, around Trace area.
Trace overpass?
Yes.
Is that building material out there on that side?
Some of it, a lot of mattresses.
Okay, I want to tell. Okay, and Tate Road, okay. And Clarence Creek Hill Road off Eight Four.
Yeah, there's a creek hill off Eight Four there, right before you get to the trade, uh.
That's where they put it when it's closed?
I, I guess, it's right there.
Okay. Do we need a approval of? Just like, most by Miss Hudson's? Second, is that, is that what you say?
I was gonna.
Answer your question.
Oh, oh, I, no good. Oh, most by Mr. Gaines, second by Miss Hudson, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, most carried.
Uh, next thing I have, uh, you got to go back to, to, President Wilson, is a request from the school. You cut the ditch along behind the bleachers and around behind that high fence going around, probably to the softball field, we cut it every year, so I just bring it there. But the request has for more than just that, but we normally don't do nothing but cut that, and that means he cuts trees. That's normally.
Okay, so we're gonna do what we normally do.
How much the most, so, second?
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Other thing I have, uh, that those, that, uh, Jay Woods, he was guaranteed for one thirty, probably one forty-two, five, about. Hey, we should have been getting a check, uh, pretty quick, that's why, so that, those will be sent it off to Jay Woods.
Okay, that's good news.
Uh, we discussed part of this, at two eleven Hammers Street, um, Sting Plant Road, uh, Mr. Gaines, uh, he looked at right away on Sting Plant Road, he did not find it right away, or he's, but through the Wilner property. Uh, he said Mr. Wilner spoke with, did a survey, got, I think we were there, I know Mr. Wilner said she does have something signed. I'm going to meet with her, uh, see what she has, and get it back, and get it to the engineers, and see what's, what she has planned, but he can't find anything in the court house on that right away, on Sting Plant.
Well, I, I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, but he give, you see what she have, the last time, when I first came aboard, remember, the houses flooded over there? And we about to swing out to, on the opposite side of the road. Um, if I'm remembering correctly, there wasn't an easement on the opposite side of the road, where we had to go in there and clean the ditches out. But according to the last engineer, there was, there was an easement on the other side, because we went in to clean those ditches out right behind it. So I think we need to kind of get it straight, uh.
We looked at the time, there's the winds, it wasn't even, through that area.
But it was easy on the other side of the road, so that's why I say I don't see how they came. I, I mean, I'm not saying that y'all have a problem, but anyway, we'll just, uh, give it Scott when he get back, and y'all give a, uh, J K S or whatever, see what she has signed, and we'll get it straight.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah.
And, uh, I suppose if you're about to eat, about the right way you're asking for, uh, Mr. Bill, I love a paper meal, you got that, uh, too.
What, 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 uh, Mr. Dollars, if I can, what Mr. Dollars talking about is I continue to have calls, uh, and I know Chief Doctor and Sheriff Patton know where I'm going with this, uh, these, these truck drivers parking their trucks on the shoulders of the roads. Um, I understand that they got to try to make a living. Uh, one issue we had last weekend was in the curve of the road directly across from IP, where there is no sho- I mean, the shoulder is asphalt, so there's no warning to a driver who may run off the road, there's a rumble strip, there's no gravel shoulder. And, and the trailer was literally on the painted line. And he said he parked it there because there was another trailer parked next to it on the other side. I mean, if somebody comes around that curve, and they hold their phone, as they shouldn't be, or they fall asleep, they're dead. Uh, and I don't know what we do moving forward. I mean, typically, I, I text sheriff or sheriff or somebody, they go by, they tag it. Well, then they go move it, and you pull the tag off and come right back, park again, I mean, it's just, I don't know what we can do, because it's a safety issue. Um, uh, we just need to put our heads together, try to figure out something moving forward. Uh, Sheriff, if y'all have any ideas, I mean.
Yeah, my suggestion is you all do an ordinance where you provide, yeah, assess a fine to. That way, when they move and they bring it back, it doesn't start that three-day window over, over on us, but if you give us an ordinance and put it in place right there, where we can get, got some T two, we can deal with it on the spot, that would have us a ton.
I mean, I'm not trying to pick on these people, I'm not saying, I mean, I get what they're trying to do, but.
Are you trying to say lie?
It's a nuisance. It's, it's a danger, yep. So, uh, Scott, would you, if the board's okay with that, Scott, would you look into what we can do on that?
Uh, yes, as far as the, whether the trucks, uh, to be put on the shoulder of the road, I think it's come up before, I'll go back and pull my notes and see what we, uh, up here, what we, uh, did pass on how we address it.
The sheriff said put an ordinance in place, so that three-day window doesn't start back over.
Okay, yeah, I'll, again, this has come up before, and I think it came up, I didn't, I mean, the road, that's going to form a threat, so I'll, so I can check. If it's a board, it's, or maybe it was an act or road regulation to that, uh.
Like you saying, it's touching the land, or something like that, you can just tow. I mean, I know, I hate to say this, I ain't trying to be meaning no trouble, but I got, I love you guys. But those people like to see their criminal numbers come out, too, and I get what you're saying, because if somebody hit one of those drills, they gonna be decapitated, you hear? And they're coming back today.
And it's not just probably the county road, I mean, there's always, always, always one park across from McDonald's out here in Morgantown, part of the side of the.
Right in front of the car wash, you see it, they're taking that company here.
Yep.
And you say.
That's not our problem.
That's in the city, yeah.
State.
And you say they haven't warned about it?
Well, I usually call them, they put a tag on it, you know, but when they go back out and come back, it starts over, you know, it's just a, there's no, there's no bite to it.
Yeah, if they move, if they move it, it start over again when they bring it back.
Right.
Mr. President? Mr. Snow?
Yes, sir?
Uh, I agree with what everybody's saying, but I don't think, uh, I'm gonna ask is, if we do it right there, because I know it can't be no ordinance just for one area, so we gonna have to do it in other places that the same thing going on, right?
That's right, it has to be, you know, equal for everybody, because you don't have a certain zoning. And, I mean, it just, you need to park well off the road, off the public road, so, not on the side of it.
That's all I wanted to add, thank you.
And e- even if you set something in place where it's five, ten feet, wherever feet you want, when you do your ordinance, that would be helpful. You know, we can go out there, and if you within that ten feet of the road, we tow it.
Well, the problem with that is, and Robby can attest to this, is our right of ways different on every road. For example, where that trailer was, it's twenty-five foot from the center of it. But on Providence, it may be what?
It'd be forty foot, depending on where it is, it could be a sixty foot.
You know, that's the, uh, and really true with engineers, with no more of that, you know, the, the.
They need to find legal places to park. Yeah, or, you know, finds me a, 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 pay to park, whatever.
Next thing I have, I brought it, uh, last board meeting, or the before, uh, at thirty-five Scott and Drive, we got E W P. Uh, that big rain, it, it collapsed, uh, and, and fell in. Um, I bet with, uh, Mr. Forward last week, out there and looked at it. It's a lot of work, and, uh, forward's meeting permission to move forward, I can look and see, we can do about redesigning, redoing, he can take, he can stand up the damage that was caused by that one rain, well, we've had two rains since it's failed, you know, two rains. He needs permission to move forward, to move forward. He leave permission for it forward to move forward. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, first thing I gotta do is survey such need authorization to survey the site, so that I can see what's going on. And if y'all want to move forward designing, of course, I would be so, I would be so at that time.
Okay, we need a. Approval for that, let you move on. This, are you discussing this being an E W P site again, or what?
It was an E W P site. Kind of less than about two year, one year, a little, little less, uh. And that big rain we had, it's a lot of mind and just the whole thing, I might say the whole thing, it's one area. And it needs to be a good bit of work done, when it's forward talking, going in, maybe put the drop box in and running a pipe out the end of the drop box and things like that. Building the drop box, rebuilding the structure, is that correct, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, it's not, it's not going off, going down the slopes, we can't buy capture and quarter drop under the, the, the concrete work to do it out of that sort of, in that area.
Okay, uh, need a motion, I guess, to, uh, let Mr. Ford proceed with, take a look at it anyway.
It may be a cost estimate, once he surveys to tell us what his cost to.
What is that, Rob?
Thirty five Captain Drive.
So move to, uh, allow Mr. Ford to do what?
Let him survey it, see what the survey needs to be, and give us the cost estimate of what he thinks it costs to get to.
I move just what he just said.
I got it, second by Mr. Hutchins, any more discussion?
I have a discussion. I just don't know what we can do as a county on these E W Ps, as far as mortgage concerned, this is gonna be it.
I, I brought it up, a little bit, they answered your question, I brought it up several years back, the city.
We can't financially continue.
The city's doing something different, they're, they're wanting, it wants to warranty how it's referred back to the homeowner, to the landowner that the project was done on. Uh, I talked to Mr. Slower about it, uh, we went to West and to the meeting, I talked to the people up there about it, discussed with them. Got a bit of writing that it's left up to the county to put it in place, of how long we wanna stand behind them, or what, you know, wants to warranty there, so. Uh, I, I'm like you, this is gonna be a high open, I think, to the county and what it's gonna cost to repair these sites.
His chair, please don't.
So, but I, I mean, I just wanna bring that, I think, I mean, I'm not saying that.
Mr. President, let me say this, let me say this. Uh. I was with the city and, and, and we did quite a few E W Ps, but, uh, here lately, it seems like. We going back within a year to correct the problem that the person that's supposed to been fix the problem, supposed to correct the problem. To me, they didn't do the project right if it blow out within a year. We, we usually didn't have those problems, cause certain, uh, contractors or whatever, when they do a project, it don't blow out in a year. Then certain people do a project, it blows out in a year. So only thing I'm saying, we need to be careful seeing that they're not responsible in a year, cause they gonna fix it where it can last, just for a year, they gonna blow out.
Well, they're only responsible for a year anyway.
For a year, and, 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 you know, Mr. Gray, going back to several, that was done in his area, that he and him looked at. That when we were going to the, uh, the files, he was there and we walked through them and me and him discussed that this is not gonna last, that's not gonna last. And, and sure, they did last. And it went back on the county, it was something we could fix, you know, with some concrete, different things that we slipped by those, but this one's gonna be an eye opener, I think, to the county.
Is all that land private property? At what, what point do we turn it over to citizens to take care, I mean. I got stuff on, all my property washing out, uh, you know, but I, I, I pretty much fix it myself, cause I don't rely on anybody to do anything for me. But, uh, and, and if y'all own a piece of property, y'all will be able to maintain it.
Um, you know, I just wanna bring it up, and like I said, I know Mr. Scranton, everybody's aware of it, but like I said, it's two that happened on him, uh, on his area. It's been several other areas that we might go back to the dress and watch and babysit, uh.
I mean, the problem is, when the contractor walks away from it, their year's up, here we are. We, we have nothing.
When does their year start, after the final?
After punch list.
The punch list, didn't that punch list take like two years before they ever finished?
Nah.
And we give a punch list to them, they supposed to correct them, you know, and it's really not a timeline, it's just bored on the punch list, but they do.
But they timed up the start.
Until the definitive is accepted and it runs starts.
But that, but when that year's up, county can't be held liable.
It's several things that plays a factor, or what they say plays a factor, you know, that the contractor gonna tell you, this gonna tell you not so many in the project or what design, like they told the two people. We talked about that and discussed that, that it is not, they need to come before us and let us know that we can't do this project with this much money. But instead, they bid it and then they go do it.
Do we have the option of, uh, getting a price and seeing if we can get an E W P and saying, you know, the, the landowner has to do the match?
That'd be something Mr. Slower would have to answer.
Okay, the, the, the county can't keep going to same residents, keep fixing one place, then maybe the taxes on, I don't mean how big the place is, let's, let's say the tax are a thousand dollar a year. And we're fixing to spend fifty thousand dollars or more. A hundred thou, two hundred thousand E W P on something we're getting taxes on for a thousand dollars a year. Uh, it'll take a long time to pay that out.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna say this, man, cause we, we, we living in a community, first of all. Where the majority of the areas, we don't have proper drainage. And the drainage running off the city and county streets and running on these people property. So if we had the proper drainage, whether, where the water wouldn't run off our streets on these people property, we probably wouldn't be sitting up here talking about this. So we gotta be real, real careful when we say, uh, we don't wanna help these people, cause they have all these. I understand, we in Adams County, our soil is terrible. And, and every time it rain, some be rolling, be rolling for a reason, because it don't have the proper drainage for the water to go where it's supposed to go. So if, if you can need a proper drainage over on my street and my property started eroding, then I feel like, yeah, it oughta be your responsibility. But if the water running off the streets, running down, up under my house, in the back of my house, and eroding my property, I think them people deserve some help.
I'm pretty sure most of these are natural drains, or not something we created, uh.
That's what they did back in the day, created a natural drain, half of them going to peak property. That's what I didn't notice.
Has to go somewhere.
That's, that's, I got one called private, or something like that, so. E W P that just been, um, done maybe a year, I mean, probably two years ago, I don't know, I can't remember. You want out in the range, you remember Ms. Lauren Johnson's property out there? I got a call, so that's one I need to look at. She said she tried to call now, so it can get ahead before it get any worse, and that was an E W P.
And I thank her for that.
Yeah, yeah, so we need to look, look at that today.
But Robbie, what does the state say about water?
Once it's off their right away, no long bones in it. So you say to take it a minute.
Yeah, but as a, 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 a molecular fish in a big small town like this, I bet you one supervisor district's fore ain't gonna say that. Not in one of the oldest areas in the community where, where, where there's no drainage, half of them sitting there.
That's what they, my, once it's gone, it's gone, it's not us anymore.
Hey, hey, the state say that, but the state got more money and won't give us no money, they got all the money and won't give us no money. Millions of dollars up there, and they, and, and, and they got all these unfunded mandate they passed on the county, cause no, you ain't got no money.
And I talked to, uh, the lady come in here by crossing rue, about the guard rails and things, she was wanting the lady from Rook Ray. Uh, I, I did talk to them about it, they're gonna go back out and relook at it, but I don't think it'll be anything done, they sitting there, you know, they.
Where they did that work?
No, across the street from.
Where, where it's falling off and it's gonna be another four, five.
She asked about guard rails, I checked with the state on that, and a couple of things, and the state keep telling me, you know, about a pair here for ones, they, you know, it's, it's has a project, it has a project, we just don't have, you know, getting to it.
If they bore for guard rails right there, they're gonna create holes. And the whole lake's gonna fall.
That's it, right there, see?
Well, that, right, the water is running downhill and running right down in there, eroding it.
I called them, the lady from Rook Ray was here two more meetings ago, asked me, and I did, I, you know, I tried to do what I'm asked by Humbert, like I said. I said, the state do need that, I'm gonna go out. Revisited, and, uh, they said it's a project, they just waiting to do.
They'll wait till they close the highway down.
Mr. President, tell the state, put it in writing and send it to you, because when somebody run over there and off of there and, and do somebody, huh, let them be responsible for it, not us.
She, uh, she was concerned and not, they thought.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Brother, um, I rode through, I'm gonna say Friday, and, you know, I keep getting that call about that possible guard rail on Wick Cliff Road. And, you know, I, I really don't know, I don't see enough shoulder.
It's not enough shoulder, we're gonna try to build a retaining law up the back of that, uh, you know, we've been in there pulling the ditches and cleaning, having a lot of laughs, we've been back out there today. But we're gonna take some few, but then try to push it down in there and build, we retain a wall, try to put a shoulder in that area right there, about, it's about on some poly wood area, that area right there, that's what we, our claim called it.
Okay.
But they did put some dirt, and it's still a lot of dust.
It's not enough, you don't have enough shoulder, you can't, same thing he was saying about out there. If you boil right there, you already close to the road, the road gone, so you can't, you know, I just wanted to.
But that's what we're gonna do, I said, put some piles in and put some coal, we build a staying wall.
Thank you.
Y'all never carry a motion, please carry a motion for Scott.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Any? Most curious?
Nice, anything, just wanna give an update. Uh, finalizing the draw from Morgantown Road, so we can advertise, car advertising on the twenty fifth of this month. Um, trying on a project, we're still waiting on state aid's approval to advertise that project. Um, the York Road project, we have all the documents, so we're planning to submit the activation package this week to M D H, just had a conversation with Mr. Dixon. Um, so he's waiting on, he's looking forward to that. Um, still need the right of way for Burke Road, uh, once we get that, we can submit the right of way certification for that. And that's pretty much my update that I have, uh.
Okay. Who are waiting on Burke Road?
Scott, Scott, please send another email.
Okay.
Nice personal phone call, with a baby in the background crying, that might help.
See what I can do?
All right, don't poke the baby to make him cry. All right.
A little bit blue.
And also, um, the first quarter that happened, so I'm gonna use a new prices if they come up this first, these last three months, to generate a new estimate based on their, uh, make drive. I should have it in the next quarter.
Okay.
President?
Yes.
So, I just wanna. After he said that, I just like to reiterate, uh, that we probably need to go start thinking along the lines, cause we do have so much, um, state aid was, money was recommended us to spend in projects to do. So I would just like to, and I know we got so much going on, um, cause time would be the winner in passing, we won't be getting anything done. And I know right now, uh, the shape that the county, and we can't afford to be sending money back, uh, losing funding. So these, we need to start looking at some of the requests and recommendations they made us, along with, uh, probably some of the things that are, uh, in a different area that might be done a year or so.
Nice, anything else?
No, I was just about to say, I didn't understand, I was gonna bring it up, what, uh, Supervisor Gaines had said. Uh, because I was riding out of the road the other day and it looks like some, it, it's getting worse. So, uh, I agree Supervisor Gaines, we need to look at trying to do something with the state money.
Yeah, uh, yeah, delivery road needs some shoulders on it bad, I don't know, need of concrete, asphalt.
Yeah, man, it is all, I'm telling you.
Uh, Kingston Road same way, built at the same time. Oh, okay.
That's a lot of traffic.
All right, thank you.
No, fully, Mr. President, uh, thank you, Mr. Ford, but make sure with Morgantown Road, uh, that this is communicated to, uh, the city, James Johnson, the mayor, whoever's at their next board meeting. They, they, I called them earlier, uh, when we left out of this meeting over here the last time, and, uh. Just communicate everything they need, leave the ball over in that court, cause they the one got to send out the bids and do all that over there.
Yes, and Scott, you really figured all that?
Uh, uh, well, uh, it wasn't communicated well, that's what I'm telling you, because at the board meeting, they didn't mention nothing. Now they got another board meeting coming up Tuesday, I mean, the second Tuesday, or did they change it cause of the election?
No change.
To the Wednesday, that board meeting Wednesday, James, uh, Johnson need to hear from you. And you need to give him all the information he need, where he can, uh, relay that to his board, where he can get a motion to go and start advertising for this, cause we did say around April, right? Cause we, we don't, we don't need them to say, well, we didn't get the information, then we come here on the second Monday, and then they got one more Tuesday, and then we in another month.
Yes, okay.
I, I, this is some good news, and the people wanna hear this, so we need to relay it to the city, where we can go out and get this bidding going out.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Appreciate you for listening.
Thank you. See you in the next.
Morning, board, I just had some things, and Sheriff and Mayor may not want to say something today. Uh, first thing, Supervisor Gaines, hopefully I will have that quote for you, that you asked about last board meeting this week. The sales rep was on vacation, so I'll touch base back with him this week, hopefully by next board meeting, so I'll, which I asked for is a little unique, so we said it before, I'm gonna get back.
Uh, just for clarification, excuse me, President?
Go ahead.
For clarification of the, uh, Sheriff is here today, uh, maybe eight or nine months ago, Sheriff came up with a recommendation of possibly looking to tag readers for deal, dealing with the lid control. So that's just basically what the information, so everybody be transparent to know the information, are we asking him to pull up a price on them, so we'll be presenting to them. So I think that was the consensus at the board about nine months ago, we was talking about possible lid control, so he's only looking up price and just wanting maybe a better one.
Any grants available for anything like that?
Uh, we have not, for that, uh, so I.
It seems to be a big problem statewide, so I think that somebody would have some.
So I just wanted to clarify what he was looking for, was a tag reader, so you know, be transparent, so everybody know exactly what he working on.
And with that, I still, I still want our, uh, our, uh, students to, to be taught, uh, in, in the school, somebody, there's gotta be a program for that again, like it was when we were in, in school, out there.
I think the state has one.
But we, we need to try to get that in the schools, cause the, the, the children can police the parents, uh, and, and call their attention to, they might get smacked once or twice, but, uh, depends on the parents, I guess, um.
Mr. President should have, uh, one application for a new hire for a jailer, uh, to be a Stephen Knight. Have a pay rate of thirteen twenty three an hour, annual salary of twenty seven thousand five eighteen fourteen.
I have no paperwork for new hires.
I have a signed copy from H R.
You, you say you have it with you?
Yeah, that's open. Yes, ma'am, that is open.
Okay, uh, Stephen R. Knight, rehire. Correction, total, hourly rate thirteen twenty three, annual rate of twenty seven thousand five eighteen forty. Need a motion?
So, say it.
This by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries? Motion carries.
Uh, we're also asking for a budget amendment, uh, in zero zero one two two oh six four five, which is custodial cleaning supplies. Uh, Ms. Washington, you have that?
Hey, Ben.
Oh, budget amendment request.
I'm gonna think she does, I'm just gonna think she does. What you talking about?
Okay, I, we'll hold off on that, I don't have it, so Mrs. Wilson apparently hasn't sent it to you, so, I will work on that, we'll present it next board meeting.
Okay.
The rest of this month. Uh, trash report. District one thirty-five bags, district two ninety-two, district three one ninety-seven, district four sixty-two, and district five seventy-five, um, one thing that this does not reflect, is they are collecting, correct me if I'm wrong, almost three hundred bags of trash from the courthouse and council.
Y'all are picking up the trash from, uh, the buildings, throwing them in the dumpsters, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
People bringing their garbage from home? I don't know, somebody likes a lot. Can you do something about that from the raccoon in the courthouse?
That's what I did.
I, uh, worked with these, the citizens has taken care of these. Probably don't wanna know, was it, he manning? All right, anything else?
Folks, folks, he finished, I just wanna mention this, uh, I was in my car wash, minding my own business, washing me a few cars, and they had these individuals come by with, with a thing to pick up paper and a trash bag, and, uh, it's, it's real, real embarrassing when somebody gotta come from Utah, and all these different places to pick up our trash. But I wanna thank the church, the church of Jesus Christ and Latter Day, they saints, because they was all up and down Mount Luther King, they remind me of the Beesleys on, what is that, where they be picking up our trash. Maybe our, uh, people in our community need to look at what people are doing, that picking up trash, and, and, and help keep the community clean, 'cause I, I stopped them and talked to them, that's embarrassing, somebody had to come from Utah, uh, and all these other places to help keep our community clean, and we got all these people right here, just don't get the picture, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, on that note, Ricky, I see a lot of people in this town that go walk a lot, and they, they got, they pick up bags and start picking up trash, as they go, Dana and I do it when we walk, and it's just, I mean, it's just, it takes the community to keep the community clean, because there's some people that just really do not care, and I, I don't, I don't understand it at all, I really don't, 'cause I take a lot of pride in, in what I have, and, and, and what the city has, and what this county has, all, because this is our home, and I just, I don't know why anybody wanna trash the place up, but then you follow people home, see where they live, and what their yards look like, they don't care, so it's just a difference of opinion, I guess, and a mindset. Okay, this is the budget amendment, uh, you moving, uh, money from one, uh, fund to another?
Yes, sir.
So, I need a, a motion to approve the, uh, budget amendment for the sheriff's office.
So move, you, 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 so move.
Okay, that's my next, great, second by Mr. Gaines.
If I may, the reason why we've had to make these amendments is when we originally did the budget, we weren't having to pay for all cleaning supplies, we had the company, and then we transitioned out of that, and so now we're having to pay for all the cleaning supplies, and costs have gone up, you know, since we originally did that, so that's the reason why we've had to do this.
Okay, all right, all in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, I just have a few things, this might be, I won't be before you long, first of all, I wanna thank you, just watching for being so patient with us, you comes, I know it's been a transition for you, but you've been handling well, uh, she's, she's on the C, J C committed with, and she came in the other day, and I heard the judge make some comments, and I did too, so we just wanna publicly say we appreciate your job. I also wanna thank Supervisor Higgins, I'm calling you out today, because, uh, I know Supervisor Gray's here, some, some neighborhood watch meetings, but I, I have to say, you always bring a crowd with you when you do your meetings, I know it wasn't at the last one, but I know we had some representation there, and I do wanna say I appreciate you taking the time to do those neighborhood watch meetings, it's not all the time that we can, you know, have a chance to fellowship and help communities, when we're not on call, or not at some type of function, or just in a set, where they get a chance to question and ask things like they done, but I know you've done it, and I know, uh, President Wilson is doing it, you're coming up in the city soon, I think I sent your name on the fly, maybe I'm telling you something.
You're my dad?
Yeah, you're gonna be at the church soon, don't worry about it. Uh, for all of you all, we're successful, thank you though, thank you for doing it, that's very important.
Thank you all for always being there, you always have the support there to support me with this, so, uh, I thank you, and major certainty, I, I haven't forgotten, don't, don't think I've forgotten, I got you, don't think I've forgotten.
And I'm sure.
I'm working on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure Supervisor Gray knows, uh, because he's been questioned, it's not just about, uh, the public safety in those years, they have a lot of questions for you all, so if y'all have an attendant neighborhood watch, you're here, now Supervisor Milton, we're trying to get one going again, you're here, because the person who's doing it, they wanna do it more than you're doing for ten years, so we looking for somebody in your area, and Supervisor Gaines, he working on for you too, so we're gonna love to see y'all, let them be, but the other thing is, you brought up trash, and I'm glad that you bring it up, I know y'all get those texts from me, I started sending you those videos to help you with constituents, to let them know that we are picking up trash, you might see this, and might see that, but, you know, we showing y'all that, so you can send it to your people, so don't be complaining as much to you all, saying, and, and, you know, I make sure that, well, we make sure now that they're videoing every road that they're doing, so y'all have a day and time saying they just picked up, we'll work on it in the future for you. But the other thing that's helping us is what the judges have done with the work release, that, that, I feel like you've been working out pretty good, because nowadays, implementing work release, again, in the justice court, that allows us to use trustees to do more on our side, and what they do is, the people that come in there working our fines, we've asked for all of them to be put with Johnny and his crew, so that they can get whatever they need done, for the county, done, and Fisher Man, and for us, it helps us with contraband, because we don't have them interacting with public as much, because they're using the work release, folks, I know you see the guys out there on the sidewalks and things, uh, those are all work release people that you see sweeping up and cleaning around the courthouse now, so it's working out great for us, when I met with Judge Barber, he planned on putting more there. Let's see here, don't forget about the Lee Willi event coming up, April thirteenth, I heard y'all talk about the Williams and, and all that stuff, here's a free event that they can get some of their sign out, if y'all decide to go with that money. Um, the other thing is, I don't know if y'all have, ever heard of Flex, but that's a federal law enforcement training center, they train probably three hundred fifty thousand people a year, they asked us, I've come down to Georgia to be a mentor for other sheriffs and chiefs and other people that are coming through there, but I couldn't go, and so I got a phone call this morning that I was very excited about, because now, June seventeen and eighteen, they're gonna bring, um, a federal law enforcement, uh, training, leadership training here to Adams County, they were going to Eugene, but they said they thought about us down here in Adams County, they wanted to bring it here, so I'm very excited, that's, you can't get any better training than Flex, I mean, these people train, not only people in the United States, they train training foreign countries as well, and I was pleased when they thought about, you know, Sheriff Fanny in Adams County, to come here and want to put on a train, so Supervisor Milton, we may be giving review as well, because we don't, we may need to use that private center if we can't get the same room, so, June seventeenth and eighteenth, we're gonna make that happen. The last two things I wanna mention is, I just wanna give kudos to the, to the deputies and to the H G's office for two things that happened yesterday, on yesterday, um, I received a call from Trey Martyrs of the Attorney General's Office, he was at, he just happened to be at the gas station in Washington, he said, he called me in class, and I said, Gladys, Harrison, I said, what's going on, he said, I got this eighty-seven year old guy here who seems to be just completely turned around and delusional, and he asked for assistance, so we sent our, I sent the deputies out there to contact him, and find out if the guy was missing, and hadn't just been reported to the state authorities yet, so just him having that keen eye, deputies getting out there interviewing, once they got there, determined that this guy was missing from Laurel, Mississippi, uh, he was three and a half hours away from his home, and they were able to get in contact with the family, and, and the family didn't even notice he was missing, and find out that he was missing, he has, uh, you know, he has a case of dementia going on, and they were able to return him to his family that night, I thought that was great, that, one, that, that, uh, Trey Martyrs took the time to call, and even be concerned, seeing that he just happened wandering into a gas station and seen something that seemed a little bit off, and two, the training that goes behind him and those deputies to be resourceful enough that, to go beyond the fact that this person hadn't been reported, but to track down the family members and find out that he really was missing, that could have been terrifying, as you know, the last couple of months, we've had a couple of those incidents like that happen, where people run off and drove in woods, got lost in farms and all that, so I just wanted to commend them for their actions, and, and the other day, at a gas station down south, and I'm sure this will be in the paper later on, there's way he had an incident, where an individual was assaulted, and it resulted in, you know, one falling, the other, Good Samaritan shooting shots fired out of a vehicle, the deputies were able to, I did that individual, arrest him and seize his vehicle, that's kinda guys that y'all got here, and we just want to say that we appreciate everything you're doing, and what you're gonna do in the future, but I wanted to give those guys kudos for, for doing that as effectively and quickly as they did. Anytime you shooting out of a moving vehicle at somebody, that's a problem, anytime you willing to openly assault somebody at a gas station, bro, they like, with no fear, uh, no, no thoughts about what the consequences are, that's a problem, and we wholeheartedly believe removing those individuals from our societies today, that's all I have for y'all, if y'all have any questions.
Yeah, do you have a, an incident report on what happened on, uh, Main Street? Two o'clock in the morning?
Are you talking about your thing, is in the paper?
It's in the city.
I won't have any incident reports.
I just seen that y'all were, had gotten involved in, or do something about it.
I'm sure we, I don't know if we responded or not, I'm sure we did, but, uh.
Deputies did respond, however, it's a city case, we, I mean, the city's the one that's working it, but we did, the deputies did assist them that night with crowd control and stuff like that.
Was it drive by?
State of detail, no, sir, was it an argument?
It was an argument.
Seen it happen in block room, or block nine half to my house, or something.
It woke you up?
Yeah, anytime you have an incident where a large crowd, even if it's in the city, you know, it's just in law for him to respond. We know how overwhelming a crowd can be, especially crowds of their size, so even if they don't call, we don't show them fear, that's just what we, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, anybody else? All right, we ready for round table?
Sure, you ready for me to do?
We'll, we'll see.
Well, uh, Sheriff Department, I need y'all to listen, listen closely, and I, I feel your pain, and I, I understand you're underpaid, and, uh, as a board, the only reason I'm gonna say this, because I'm sitting on it, as a board, we try to look out for all our employees, I mean, Sheriff Department, all employees, say it like that, but with the, with the one point two million dollar nick y'all took, I understand that, y'all got a lot of inmates going across the river, so, uh, I'm just gonna say it like I gotta say it, man, I, I, that article I seen in the newspaper and read it, I, my mom was a math teacher, and when you say math, I, I can read it off of, and reading it, I, I, I read a whole lot, I had to read that one three times, to make sure that I'm saying the correct stuff, and it made it seem like to me that everybody helping and assisting the Sheriff Department, but when it come to the board of supervisors, I, I hope I'm not taking this the wrong way, like community helping, these people helping, these people helping, but at the end of the day, supervisors ain't doing what they supposed to do, now, I sit in on the budget hearing, and everybody know everything went up, everybody know that garbage went up, duffel, everybody know herds went up, everybody know insurance went up, and ain't nobody talking about, 'cause we self-insure, insurers, how insurance went up, because every department has sick people, some have more sick people than others, and it causing our insurance to go sky high, now, as one supervisor, and I hope I'm reading the newspaper wrong, but it seemed like the finger was being pointed at the board of supervisors, and, uh, if I'm wrong, Lord forgive me, but that's the way I took it, and the bu, the budget period coming up, I don't know, is it gonna get any better? But, we need to get some more notifications, all over this county, all over this city, and I hope Ms. Washington, something come over, we can get all our employees arraigned, with everything going up, and their salaries don't reflect how everything is going up, I do understand that, but as a, as one member of this board, we gotta look out for all our employees, and that's what we try to do. And I'm gonna move on.
You wanna address that?
Go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, let me address that. It's not that we pointing the finger, but I wanted to make the public aware of where we at right now, because we're getting overwhelmed with calls from the city, and we got a ton with the county, and, you know, when you losing that type of employee with that kind of experience, when we start saying that it's gonna be tough for us to respond, I need people to understand why, I don't think for one minute that this board doesn't support Sheriff's Office, I wanna be very clear there, but my fight ain't just been with, with you all, 'cause we've said it, and you all have said it, if you had money, you could do it, and I truly believe that you will, but if you pay attention, I'm saying something to the state and everybody, because I feel like closed mouths don't be fitted. We got this upcoming, this budget in October, and you, you already know we gonna act, so I don't want you all to feel slighted, but I think that we've been pretty transparent since I, since I've been in office about what's going on, and when we asked about an update, we gave one, and that's, that's just where it's at, and it's not saying anything about you all, 'cause I know y'all say every day that we don't have any money, y'all saying that clearly, but I just need people to understand that this is the battle we up against, even if they don't give a dime, or they don't give up a prayer for us to get what we need, we need some help, because we're losing experienced people, and I wasn't at the last meeting when Chief was in here doing the, during, asking for that stuff, the promotions, but that was key in me trying to at least keep our core group here in Adams County, where we don't lose that core group, because it's not just a little officer when you lose, even that, you're losing somebody who has a real relationship with the community, when stuff spin out, iPhones are ringing, we not having to call other people, we're getting that information, so, boy, if you feeling slight, like we pointing the finger, we not trying to reach out, but, if you not, if you not, if, if you feeling like we attacking you, we not trying to attack you, we just making it real clear, the state of war, the sheriffs off to that right now, and so we're hiring people from Domino's and everywhere, trying to get, you know, good quality people here, but that struggle is real, and it's not just here, it's every law enforcement agency across the state, even M A P is suffering right now, they making fifty, but they losing all their troopers to Texas, to Texas, and don't even, don't even talk about what's going up north to South Haven and the other areas, so, it's not just you all, but when people ask me to be straight up and, and frank about it, I'm just gonna be honest about it, and that's where we at right now, but, but again, I'm saying this publicly, I'm not attacking the board, I'm just telling where we are as an agency right now.
Well, Sheriff, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Gray, it was, it was a slight to the board supervisors. Well, Sheriff, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Gray, it was, it was a slight to the Board of Supervisors, in, in my opinion. Now, not necessarily the way it was written, just what was said, and, and, and people just don't seem to understand that we don't have a mechanism to raise money. The only thing that can raise money in this county is, you can raise taxes, which we did, the highest amount you could possibly raise in the legal, legal system the last time, which was a blow to all of us, not one of us wanted to see that done. And, and that was, and it is, he mentioned, insurance, pirs, all that stuff going up, and it, it is a crushing blow to us and, and trying to figure out how to do it. The only way we can make more money is to have more houses in this community, have more people working in this community, have more businesses come in. The businesses come in are very slow to come in, and, and we're not, and, and, and I've even got Mr. Gray and Ms. Hutchins on board with this, that, that this thing of, uh, setting aside the taxes for ten years when you get here. That means if a company comes in and they, they basically pay no taxes. And we, we can't have that, cause that's where we get our money from, the adware and taxes. But you, you know, we don't want your guys to leave, we don't want anybody to leave. The only thing I can say to all these people moving to these different areas is, most of them aren't thinking that, okay, I'm gonna get two dollars more an hour over here. Or, what's the cost of living like over here? The cost of living in Natchez and Adams County is so much better than anywhere just about you could go. And it, it, and, and so when you write down to it, the rent's cheaper here, everything's a little bit cheaper here for the most part, other than gas, and that's because we're all on interstate. Uh, and that's what also kills us. It, it's, it's one of those Achilles things, if we had an interstate here, we'd have businesses opening up everywhere. But it's just, it's slow getting businesses to come to this, this area. And we don't receive the tax dollars that, that, that the city gives. I, I hear all this stuff about this is coming to town, this is coming to town, and all these people are staying the night, they're eating it. We don't get any money from that as a county, and it's just, it, it is hard to fund this county. I don't know if Ms. Washington's gonna start printing money for next year or what, because, uh, I don't know where that money's gonna come from. But, but, but believe me, we'll cheap cutting where we can, and that's, that's the only thing we can do, that I yield the floor.
Well, I, I wanna say, I, one thing, we might not always see eye to eye, but I respect the fact, I know where you coming from all the time. And I understand his tone, and that's how I feel almost every day too, his things, everybody. And, and here's the thing, I, I hope y'all are really listening to that one guy over here today. That guy, I'm telling you guys, even if it ain't a law complex, he got a lot of avenues that can help a lot of communities. I've seen this, and, and you can check their own track record for yourself. It's a down and dirty land, it just make the work a look for, for a lot of carry options.
I, I have a question for you. Now, since we, uh, the, the new DA started, he's cleared a lot of cases. Is he clearing out some of our problem with the jail system?
Yes.
Having so many inmates?
I'm gonna say this, he is, he's got the court system moving through pretty good. Now, one thing that would help me from the board, just, just to be honest with you guys, with the jail system, you know, he, oh, yeah, Ushaw has that, that monitoring unit that you can put on, uh, that you can put on, we don't have that at the sheriff's office. And, and that would help if, if we can get one person, I haven't budgeted for one, that's why I hadn't asked. But if we can get that, I'm not saying just let some of the worst of the worst out, but some of these folks that's sick and costing us a lot of money, that would help us.
We don't have a monitoring system?
We don't, juvenile, sheriff's office doesn't have one, I never budgeted for one, so.
Well, you need to try to figure out what that would take.
That would help us some during this transition period right now.
Anytime we can cut expenses, anywhere we can cut expenses, that's not gonna endanger the public, I'm all for it.
But that's the thing, I wouldn't put it on somebody who I feel like is gonna be real dangerous to the public. But it would help us with some of the housing situation, especially some of these sick folks who, uh, who costing cash money.
See, that's a one-time, uh, thing, that ain't gonna recur over and over and over, when you can buy something like that. You know, we, I was going to basketball game, I'm like, hey, what did I do, got on, we got an ankle bracelet on, so, I mean.
Was it clay?
Yeah, but, but that's a one-time, uh, uh, thing that we can probably purchase with some money that, I don't know if we can use that money or not, but it's a one-time deal, and it's not gonna come up the next year, so we can use some of that money for a one-time purchase.
And I know he give that, he give that to seizures, I know where he's going with this, and, and I know that's high on his agenda, on, he had caught his agenda.
It's just a slow process.
Well, he's working, well, he's having worked through several years back.
Right.
Because we, we had a ton.
We lost a lot of money to that.
And I, and even with the big seizure that, that happened back in twenty eighteen, I'm working on that right now, it's, I'm all the way up to the Assistant Attorney General of the United States.
Trying to get the money?
Trying to get the money, it, it has been cleared all the way up to a certain point, and so, she's the last person that I need to sign off on.
Will that become to our general fund?
Not for you all, though. It has to be used for, tell them it has to be used by you.
It can be used for a budget and can't be used in place of a budget, it can be used for overtime, property, equipment, uh, and training.
I'm glad you cleared that, I had no idea, I was just.
Now, just to, so with that, with that money though, but to upgrade some of the stuff that we already have outdated as far as the program, that we can't come to asphalt jail, asphalt raises, asphalt, the new equipment, is, we're planning on using some of that to upgrade the actual operating system, dispatch system that we have.
Okay. I want you to check into the monitoring system and, and is there any kind of grant for that? Just, you know, I'm gonna ask that question, because I don't believe in paying for something that you can get money for somewhere else.
At one point, the courts had a grant that they were gonna pay for us, for us, and we waited on it, but I don't know what kinda happened to this.
See what, see what y'all come up with and give, give us update when you get a chance. Mr. Gray?
You take nothing done today, I wanna congratulate the new president of Ohio State University, Mr. Tracy Cook. I think they made an awesome decision to give, uh, Mr. Tracy Cook a chance at being the president of university that he run and did. I don't, I haven't been talking about poverty in this community, but, uh, I heard the lady from whatever group she was in mentioning the poverty in this community, and if she can see the poverty, I know everybody else can see the poverty, it's a real problem, and we need to try to address. Martin Town Road is already taken care of, uh, is, is getting to the point where, uh, we finna hit this swimming pool. And, uh, I don't know, we can't wait till the last minute to address what we need to address with this pool. The pool need to open and close on time, if we don't, uh, do what we have to do, then the pool is not gonna open on time. So, we need to get with the city and figure out, uh, where we gonna go with this pool. Move right along, uh, basketball, it, it, it's, I love to watch basketball, I go to all the LSU home games, but it's getting to the point now where it's getting too personal, and people got their feelings and their emotions involved. When I play basketball, we talk, we talk noise, and, 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 boy, you be surprised at stuff we say on the court. But when the game over with, all that stuff over with, they translating it now, they put it all on Facebook and attacking. I mean, young people, these people, kids, they attacking. What happened in, 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 in Utah, Utah lady basketball player was forced to leave a hotel due to race ill. That's crazy. Haley Van Lee defending her teammates because Haley say the same thing I say is no problem, but when somebody else on the team that don't look like her say it, then people blowing it out of proportion. What have we come to in the world? I mean, I, I don't understand what's going on. Anyway, uh, my sympathy goes out to, uh, the individuals that lost their life in, in Baltimore, Maryland. Uh, when I saw it on the news, I was scared to death, but that's where my ex-wife and my daughter live, and I texted her, and she said she had crossed that bridge two hours before that happened, and, and I was like, thank God. And I'm trying to go fast, I got a call from somebody in River Breeze Department, got all kind of problems. Uh, they, some of them is hood funded, so by being in the city limits, I called the mayor and hooked him up with the mayor, and the mayor is supposed to be looking into it, but I'm gonna tell you right now, if the mayor don't look into it with the pitches that I received from these individuals that live over here, with sheep rock all in their tub and been there for six and seven months, I'm not gonna sit by and allow that to happen, so I hope the city will take care. And Ms. Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one, did you give our, our money for the scholarship? You, you take it, me? Nah, there you go, there go my check.
Thank you.
Thought I had given you that. Everybody paid their check, Brandon take cash.
That's exactly what we're gonna do. But see, I got it on camera.
They, you're good, you're good to have cameras these days. Uh, I, I do wanna say this, uh, all our people, what, what's going on with Bill? We getting the money with no, nothing being done, no work being done, so we, we got funds and we not moving forward, uh, uh, what's going on with, anybody know?
I guess, being that the, uh, rain is about over with, I imagine that's sorrow, man.
It's about the last phase of the living.
Yeah, it's been, it's been on the stand still for a while, but I know we been getting the money.
You can reach out to Chandler and see what's going on with that.
Then again, I just wanna say this, and I'm not trying to hurt nobody business, but, uh, we, we need to come together with the city and the county, and maybe we need to bring, what's the name of the new people out there with the asphalt?
APAC.
Used to be Blaine?
APAC.
APAC, we probably need to have a sit-down, come to Jesus meeting with them, because it's not gonna look good for, the city is getting all their asphalt from. Hazer Hurst, with the streets. So, we, we wanna do business with them, but if they two-time hire a hundred shop?
Well, I mean, I did a guy, a guy that came from, was it March or what? I can't remember, March came or something, looked at the road, and I asked him, uh, what do they pay? And he says from a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a mile for asphalt, and we paying two hundred and forty thousand dollars a mile for asphalt.
That's a promise, though.
So, I mean, uh.
You're paying shop around.
So, my only thing is, we, we wanna do business with them, but we need to come to the table and sit down and have a talk, and I think we can resolve this problem. Uh, I, I ain't trying to step on nobody toes, this is just my opinion, this is not coming from the Board of Supervisors and law enforcement, I hope y'all don't take this the wrong way, but I'm talking about the door, door shop man, uh, uh, I even heard Councilman Stokes say this, sometimes we just don't need to be speeding after somebody, and we can get them later and putting other people's life at risk. Uh, I, I'm living in a community, and, and, and people know this is a retirement community with a lot of senior citizens that ease out in the road like that. And sometimes when these cars is flying like that, they not gonna see you, so if it's not endangering nobody, uh, we, we just can get them some other time. I, I, I just don't wanna see somebody get ran over, and we chasing somebody because they ran a red light, or, or, or they got a warrant for a speeding ticket or something like that. Thank God we ain't had that problem over here. So, my sympathy goes out to the Burns, the Gambier, the Wright, the Martin, the Washington, the Hicks, the Chapman, and the Nelson family. And Mr. President, I just wanna, even though it gonna be hard, Ms. Jane, I just wanna wish LSU good luck tonight, because, boy, they got something on their hand, fool around with Ms. Jane Clark, she ain't no joke, thank you, that conclude mercy.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Yeah, again, repeating that, uh, Supervisor Gray, I do have to congratulate, uh, Mr. Tracy Cook for becoming the president of Ohio State, that was well deserved, he deserves that, so I congratulate on him, my homage to him. So, I think he'll be good for it. Uh, the second thing I have is, uh, the summer youth program is getting ready to start, it's April first, we gonna start taking applications as of today. We used to get ten students from that age of sixteen to, uh, twenty-one, and that's high school and, uh, college students, so, I'm asking each supervisor to, uh, at least try to get at least two students, you know, just asking people to put in applications and we'll go from there. The next thing I have is, uh, wanted to know where are we on the baseball field, I think I supervised Milton about that, and see if you know anything, or when we gonna have a deadline of completion, or what's going on with Benson? I know it's, they say it'll take two weeks for it to begin, it's been a month almost, so, uh, we don't know nothing, have reached out, so. We kinda need to get in touch with Mr. Farley, that's his last name, and, uh, see where we are to get that completed, so we can try to at least have a grant opening when we can, that's something that needs to be done. And that's all I have, uh, President was.
Mr. Gray?
Before I, before I start my report, I do need to remind us, we skipped something, we got the auditors.
Yeah, we, we, I gotta go put that up.
Okay.
Since we started, since we started, we're gonna, we're gonna finish this up, we're gonna wrap it up, and then we're gonna.
Uh, I'm, I'm kinda, it's gonna be kinda quick, uh, I've been on the legislative zone calls, uh, trying to follow our bills and, uh, stuff like that. So, I, it was on Thursday this week at ten thirty, so one of the things that I think as a county, we definitely need to watch is the mental health bills, we got two of them that's probably gonna pass, uh, but they are definitely gonna put the county in a box, we talking about money. So, both of the bills deal with mental health people and mental health, uh, the jail. Uh, if these bills pass without any, um, going back and adjusting them, a mental health patient cannot be here in a jail no more than twenty-four hours. Uh, Brandon might be up on the mental health board, but way, the way it's going now, when they move out of facility, they have to move out, so if they can't get to a, a bed in a state facility, the county is gonna have to fund them in a private facility. I don't know if you've been watching, they got a house bill and a senate bill on there. Uh, one of the other things, uh, Rural Water Association, uh, we all have some, uh, it's, bill has not passed, I've been following pretty good, I mean, uh, they got some money that they are trying to put in a bill, they had not really figured out, uh, exit money is gonna use, one of the other bills, they're trying to find out, the state has extra offer money, and what they're trying to do is make a grant program for, uh, rural hospitals to be available for. So, I was just kinda, some of my, our major updates with our legislative, uh, so I'm trying to make all those legislative zone calls weekly, and those are just a few that's very important to us, but then I wanna go back and, um, Jeff, just quickly, address the offer. You know, I, I, I mean, you know, I sit at the table, I do all I can in support of, uh, Sheriff Department, and I really do, but that's probably one of the first times that I actually read an article. Uh, and, and ironically, I read something, I don't read a lot, but this one of the ones that I felt like, I personally felt like it was a pun, a thing upon that supervisor, and, uh, and, and I think we all have a well enough work relationship. I think we all have, if we want, uh, to solve our problem and law enforcement pay is something that's all around the county, all around the state, it's all around the nation, and you see it a lot of things, cause, uh, other areas are losing folks, you got the state losing folks, everybody's moving, so I'm very well aware of it, and, you know, so what I would just say, you know, and, and everybody had a voice or opinion, and I know that you was making sure the public know, but some things, I guess the way it was communicated, I almost feel like that, and I know that it's nothing that, uh, I don't think it's anything as a board that we can actually come together and talk about and work things out like we did, cause, you know, never in the world, and I know, I can tell from the conversation, that wasn't your, uh, wasn't your goal to point the finger at the board, but it kinda, and I think, you, you can kinda tell, it, it, it kinda, the way it was grown, I think it tells everybody around here, because we do support, we realize there's a support, and I hate losing people, so, you know, I just say, you know, just let's do like we did earlier, let's explore our ideas and put them together, you know, and then when we pu- push them out. Let's explore our ideas and put them together, you know, and then when we pu- push them out, you know, that way, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare sit here at the table and say anything to make the Sheriff Department or anybody in the Sheriff Department staff feel in a kinda way, uh, I didn't think that was the case, but we definitely, because you know how the public, how things happen, it's, uh, and, and, and you might not, you got good supporters, you got bad supporters, but you don't catch some supporters that really support you good, and you can't go to church without somebody eating you up for a misunderstanding, and it's really not, you know, that's not the case, so, you know, I just hope we, in the future, we just try to choose what we do and work together to solve the problem, because I'm definitely not uh, on the wrong, on the opposite side of solving any of the problems from the jail to the pay or anything, yeah, and I yield the floor.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I wanna address the article as well, uh, A, I guess the thing I hated the most was I read it Friday night at ten o'clock, because I couldn't have slept. Um, and I, and I, and I interpreted it the same way, uh, it's not the first time I've interpreted things that way. Um, there were some cuts made in Sheriff's Department, I'm gonna be flat out honest with you, I, I said it back then, I'll say it again, I think there's more cuts that can be made. I don't have, I, I, I support the Sheriff's Department, I like everybody at the Sheriff's Department, but at the end of the day, we sit at this table, we have to make tough decisions. Just look the other day, last meeting when Chief Doctor brought those numbers ahead to us, and we have jailers, cooks, and courthouse security alone is over a million dollars a year. And we're sitting here, we're saying we can't make payroll, we can't afford pay raises, we can't give these people more money, well, how the heck are we gonna afford a new jail? The guy comes before today and he says, well, I'm still gonna use the same bill that y'all were using, Billy Bob's air conditioner, I'm still gonna use him, y'all just gonna pay me instead of him. Well, then you're adding numbers, but, so instead of paying Billy Bob straight, now we're gonna be paying Billy Bob and this guy. There's just a lot more to it that I think sometimes gets overlooked, and I mean, understand everything's gone up, insurance gone up, food continues to go up. So, there's other ways around this than just saying that, you know, the ci- the citizens are in danger and our deputies are underpaid. There's, there's more to that story, and, uh, we'll address that in the next budget season, I guess. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mill, uh, Ms. Dean, do you have anything?
I do.
All right, Ms. Louis?
I have a couple of things, um, need to have the March no report through the Sheriff's Office for the House of Lords, please.
All right, need a motion.
So.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Um, April Bond, Strickland, Wilson, uh, Jocelyn Colston, and Chucky Martin, please.
All right, need a motion?
So.
Seconded by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor? Uh, motion approved.
Uh, we sent out, or Paige sent out the first round of our homestead chargeback letters, um, we did get uh, some correspondence back from the Department of Revenue, where they had made some errors, we got some correspondence from the Assessors Office where they made some errors, and so those need to be reversed, um, so if y'all would like for me to read through those, um, we'll probably need to do it two separate motions. So, let's see. On Robert Green at twenty-one Oakwood, as well as David Little at nine hundred and twenty Squire, the Department of Revenue had an error on their end, and we need to have more approvals to reverse those two chargebacks.
Need a motion?
So.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Hutchins, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Uh, from the Tax Assessors Office, we have, uh, PPIN six five seven two at Otis Redding, one thirty Otis Redding. And we also have four oh four Cherry Street, um, there were data entry entries, said security numbers for those two property owners, and need to have those two chargebacks.
The blue ones. Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, we did receive some objections to some of the chargebacks, Julie with the board has done with those, they submit those back to the state, the state looks at those again, and then, uh, responds back to the board and the property owner as to whether or not, um, there was, you know, the clarification helped them with moving or not. So, we have Suzette Blanton, Angela Marie Fortenberry, Wine Wilkins, Helen Moss Smith, and Miss Mulderhill, Kathy Stewart, Priscilla Clay, and John Collard, all filed objections timely in the Chancery Clerk's Office. So, um, if it's the wish of the board, we will submit these over to the state and let them take another look at those.
We need a motion to submit them back to the state.
Yes, sir.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
The last, uh, one I have for those that did not file objections, uh, we have been, uh, those chargebacks and just need to have those approved by the board, because an objection was received, and we will spread that list across the board.
Okay, I need a motion to approve. Moved by Mr. Gray. He's second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
How, how many was?
Uh, I'm, it's a lot, I, I, a total of over thirty something.
So, let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how do they fat out, fat out about this?
So, the Department of Revenue sends us a letter every, so actually, we get two rounds of homestead chargeback letters. So, they will send a letter to the Chancery Clerk's Office, it's our responsibility to attach a cover sheet to that and submit it onto the department, just give it to the property owner. At that point, we do get a lot of phone calls and things in, we refer them to the Department of Revenue, because it's not the county pulling the, the homestead, it's the Department of Revenue. So, we suggest that they, uh, contact the Department of Revenue and discuss with them the reason, and if there's anything, you know, that they can submit to us in the way of an objection.
So, are those homesteads pulled?
Yes. Usually it's, uh, fair to pay income, state income tax timely, or it's where they're claiming homestead in two locations.
Oh, okay.
Yep. But we, like I said, we receive these objections, and those were timely, and, you know, that's really the way that the property owners can submit it to the, to the board, and the board again, it's basically just asking for the state to.
Okay, we need to carry the motion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Slager?
Wake up.
Hey, Lord.
Yes, sir. The car now. Um,
Ray, we got a report from, uh, from Chuck regarding the unidentified taxes.
I do. From Chuck.
Lambert?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, we need a mo- yeah, we need a motion to approve, basically, Brady was trying to do to identify these funds, we're unable to identify them, and so this would take this money that's in the tax collector office that are identified and is deposited into a special account, of course it goes to general fund, sending deposits to a special account, then we hold it, um, to, you know, point coming to point it, so he's like, yeah.
Yeah, to set to bind it over time.
Okay. So.
Second. By Mr. Gray, seconded by Mrs. Gaines. Uh, discussion?
So, uh, who funded it?
It, it's in, it was in the tax collector's account, it was back in twenty twenty-two, and so Chuck went through and did an evaluation, and said that he, uh, could not decipher or identify what the funds were related to, and so we have to move them into another fund and hold them for a period of time to see if anybody makes a claim upon them.
So, if nobody make a claim, then we have.
Just.
And then now, the funds can be, can be used by the clearly fund, if someone comes back and asks for them, then we have to take back, so that's why our, the third party on track there, and our, uh, our, Chuck, Chuck recommended that, you don't just go spend it, you can hold it in case people come back, so if no one comes and claims, it's, it's pretty tough, but now it's not the time to do that, because typically, uh, Ricky, because it's more than likely he owes us money, it's probably gonna be a governmental agency that does not have a tax limitation, so we're holding it into a fund, we can do interfund loans from it, provided that we have the ability to pay it back within the time we may, in case a government agency comes and comes to ask, right?
Okay, uh, Mr. Gray failed to ask how much money it was.
No.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Gray, and you didn't even ask the question.
Seven ninety, seven hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars, eight six cents.
Is it in a, a interest-bearing account?
Uh, I think that our.
Yeah.
Very small amount of interest, yes.
Okay, we need to, uh, carry that motion. All in favor? All right.
And then I would defer my next quick, quick item after seventy-four, because then we require that we step out again.
Okay. Okay, that's all you had, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Scott, I mean, okay, until later. All right, Ms. Washington?
Uh, we have a request for emergency purchase for Kings Row, we have, um, probably, I'm, I'm putting this on the head, it's Jenny. Um, it's a business director, um, he's requesting an emergency purchase, just in case we have to get some postal, whatever, we might have some material, um, that we can't use, but, um, we might, I can get it straight on the menu, so.
Yeah, life over, King's bad, I think we might have one, me and him already discussed it this morning, he's already checked with the contractor by the way it's called, setting foreign, but if not, he's gonna pull all the wire down when it, it falls, so.
The meeting, motion to approve.
So.
Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion approved.
Yeah, I had, uh, some American fine ambulance issues today, so I was just asking, um, request for a man, um, checks and pages.
Okay, that's, uh, for the insurance?
We'll see, yeah, we'll see if they can get a docket, um.
Okay.
The shooting.
I have the second one, um, yeah, there you go. I have, uh, the coroner's office there, and just a little sign on the mouth, so they have a bunch of names they need to approve.
All right, need a motion for a budget amendment.
So.
Coroner's office, moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, all right.
Uh, I had.
Motion carried.
I had a application for relief, there was a meeting by Ms. Brenna after the fact, but, um, we just wanted permission, I told her, Taylor, I want you to stay.
Who was that?
Ms. Brenna Johnson, Justice Court, and her. She wanted to be present on, on behalf of herself.
Is this a day?
Uh, that was for last week.
Okay.
She had asked permission, and I told her she go ahead with it.
Oh, okay.
Taylor, I want you to stay.
All right, uh, need a motion?
So.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines.
I agree.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Gray. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried.
I had a transfer between departments from Justice to a county department for his capital, so it's same page, just transferring, and I also have a bunch of names, um.
So.
Second.
Moved by Mr., uh, Gray, seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Last, I had, um, request for interfund, um, transfers, um, Mr. Chuck, he had made some recommendations, then we go in and just clear out some fund balances.
Mr. Lambert? Okay. So, need a motion?
So.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried. That's, that's all for you? Okay, um, I've got, I need a motion for, uh, uh, DEQ grant for three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Moved by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, I've got a, uh, resolution from the Board of Supervisors of Adams County and Adams County, uh, Court Commission, whereas Patrick, Cornell Pat Burns, Junior passed this earth on November the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, leaves behind family, friends, means they will miss his presence, whereas, uh, Mr. Burns served on the Adams County Court Commission since August two thousand nineteen. Mr. Burns' outside affiliation and interests were varied and extensive, he served on the Board of Natchez Adams County Human Society and also membership chairman. There was no knowing, and so willing to take the area the smallest of needs. He served for three years on the Board of the Historic Natchez Foundation, was serving on the Board of the Natchez Adams County Court Commission to the time of his death. As manager of energy drilling, he's acted in numerous oil and gas associates, as well a long time member of the Natchez Rotary Club, Retire and Hunting Club, happily even doing his share anymore as a member in, of that group. Uh, so this is a resolution for Mr. Burns.
So.
All of you assigned, I wanna put it before the board.
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, I was having a resolution, I have something. Okay, I've got a, uh, the Adams County Human Society is asking for, uh, a donation for, uh, and I think we have an annual donation, I guess that's just for the next budget coming up, we need to present, uh, Human Society.
Yeah, it's probably for the one coming up.
We just need to present it before the board.
That's for the budget.
For the budget. Does it need to be? Okay, did y'all all get this letter for the Natchez Adams County Chamber Education Committee, City of Natchez, and Adams County Board Supervisor, Board General, I should have attended last, honoring the two thousand twenty-four youth leadership Natchez class, Tuesday, April the twenty-third, eleven thirty to one, Capia Lincoln Community College, Red Washington Career Center. Okay. We didn't, I don't need to do anything on that, I think that's everything in this folder.
Yeah, somebody need to go. Cause I'm not gonna be here, somebody need, somebody need to go.
Twenty-third.
Wes, you need to go too, more, if you can, if you ain't got nothing to do.
Um, I don't, I don't really have anything, uh, we've discussed pretty much everything. I don't know what was said while, while I was out of the boardroom. I know there's an article in the paper, uh, that says I threatened Ms. Granny at some point. Uh, I've never spoken with Ms. Granny, didn't threaten anybody, I just asked. Um, she came to this boardroom with pictures of her being on my property, and then invited other people to come on to my property, trespassing. And, uh, so therefore I submitted, I wanted her arrested for trespassing. She gave proof, she admitted to it in this boardroom, and also asked other people to come on my property, she's never invited on my property, and she's not been there. So therefore she was arrested for, I'm sure she's a great person, I have, I don't have anything against her. Now, the other thing I'm gonna say about that whole, this whole incident, and I don't even know what y'all are talking about when you're in here, because not one person in this room at any one time even knows what that facility is for, has no clue whatsoever how it would be built, and how much regulation is involved, and I've been involved in this project for another project like five years. The DEQ monitors everything.
Let me have a say.
Yes.
Accent.
Yeah.
But you don't.
Well, the, and the, I'm not, I'm, I'm not discussing it with you, I'm just telling my side, because apparently nobody's here to tell my side. Oh, you can't represent me as a lawyer, and there's nobody in here that even knows anything about this still. Uh, but anyway, bottom line is, I'm trying to bring a project to the county that'll make, at least bring some more money in it. It seems like everybody's against it from the get-go, and they don't even know what it's about. Um, okay. That concludes my report, uh, we have to, um, speak with auditors or, or ask questions of auditors, if y'all have questions, if y'all would like to. Can, you know, start that out. Do you, you, you guys, Tony, you can sit right here if you want to, wherever you'd be more comfortable. Oh. The, the microphone doesn't actually work over there, I think.
We just need to speak up regardless.
Could y'all wait just one second? They go on, get there. We're pulling.
I just wondered if y'all had any good news for us. No, okay.
We're, we're calling on our audit.
You know, looks.
Yes, we're calling on our audit. Look forward to, to, to future good audits.
That's good news, exactly.
We have positive outlook.
Y'all have had to clear up, how many years of audits for us, for, you know, really short amount of time?
Four or five.
Three or four.
Four. So, so.
Impressive.
So, so, let's go, you went to?
Me, uh, I did my undergraduate work in Maryland, and then I went to...
What's, what about you, sir?
Uh, undergraduate in Southern Miss.
The reason I'm asking is because our association, uh, tried to put something in place where a lot of people go to school for accounting, but they don't deal with government accounting, and we were trying to get some of the local universities to add that as a curriculum, so when somebody come out there, have an idea of how to do this, cause I don't care what kind of degree you got, or account, if you ain't never dealt with this right here, you gotta learn this on the job. And, and I'm glad you wasn't in Maryland, went on the bridge when you... Okay. Yeah, I...
Okay, y'all ready?
No, we ain't ready.
Well, you can ask questions, got that one in?
Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right. I'm Scott Spikes, this is Sensible Gooden, we're, we're Bridger CPA, uh, we had the privilege of doing the county's audit, and, uh, we appreciate all the cooperation from all the management and, uh, every, every employee that they contributed to it. Uh, overall, the opinions were, were good opinions, uh, we, we've got one that's, uh, that's been hanging us up, I guess, the past few years, uh, matter of fact, it was the year before we even started the audit, I think the prior since yet had the same problem, it was in the tax, tax collector's office, um, on Mount Reckon Island, the bank statements, and, uh, that just created what we call the qualified opinion there. Uh, but, but our understanding is that, uh, the office is getting delta computers involved on this, and we're hoping that by the nine-thirty, twenty-three audit coming up, that, uh, this could potentially be resolved and, and may result in all unmodified opinions, so. That's, that's gonna be our only finding that we consider a financial statement finding, which affects their opinion. Um, another thing we've got upcoming is, um, we just wanted to mention that there would be a great deal of assistance to us would be if the county could get the two audit reports on those component units, the port and the airport, just as soon as possible, cause we have to pull those into the county report, which is what...
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, for the timeframe, when, when, when would you need it?
Uh, what are we scheduled? We're, we're literally anticipating the schedule of all, and I would think probably due the, on cycle and layer, this latter part of the summer. So, that way, I do a time slot, which you can say, what, by the end of September?
Who's in charge?
Somebody send them an email, or Scott, or somebody send them an email?
I've, I've been talking to their CPA, yes, and, um, and I've, you've expressed, and she has expressed back, back to us that it understands the time is in essence, and it, it did hold us up a little bit on getting this finalized, so I think it's on the forefront of their mind to try to get those pushed, pushed forward, so.
The president, Ms. Grant, uh, are they on a different timeframe from us or something?
No.
I'm talking about the airport in the port pool.
Yes, sir.
Well, what's your problem?
That's a good question. Anyone that needs to be answered.
Well, okay, uh, moving on to the audit on page twelve, uh, the exhibit four, and this is kind of your, uh, income statement, so to speak, uh, revenues and expenditures, it did show a positive change in fund balance, about three and a half million, um, this is mainly contributed, this, what mainly contributed to this is the three billion issued in bonds for the twenty-two year, uh, and then there was some other debt as well, but other than that, without considering the new debt issues, revenues and expenditures are pretty close to the same, which is what you kind of expect and, and, you know, in a government. Um, the other thing, the prior period adjustment down there, um, on that segment, there was about, uh, two million. This was, uh, I think David had talked with y'all last year about the port having a receiving board that no payments had been made on it, and, uh, the board wound up deeming it uncollectible, uh, so that was part of that prior period adjustment potential seal there.
Now, what is it?
Is that on page twelve?
It's down at the bottom, uh, it shows it coming out of the net access on page twelve.
Is it legal for us to just write that off? To charge off?
It's, it's not necessarily to write off, it's you're deeming it to be uncollectible, it's still kind of owed, but there's the likelihood that, that it's ever gonna be collectible is...
When you say is that?
Is that the net change? I mean, the net changes in fund balance?
Um, down below there, yeah, you see the fund balance beginning, and then you'll see prior period adjustment right under that.
Well, uh, we, we, we still have to take in consideration that, uh, the port is, uh, is owned by us, and we don't give the port no funding, and go out there and hustle up that money, and I like the airport, we give airport funding, and, and, uh, we don't, we don't give the port no funding at all, so, uh, I guess that's why we took it under consideration, we don't give them no funding.
That's just, uh, that's just an entity that, uh, should be making us money. Um, Warren County privatized airport many years ago, and it brings in a lot of money because it's been privatized, um, and it might be consideration for us that we have an asset instead of just, uh, writing that kind of money out, it's kind of foolish, but, uh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, um, I'm just gonna hit on a couple of more things, let's see, page forty-eight, um, that's the subsequent events that we had, that's the debt that occurred after our FY twenty-two year end, uh, you had the heart renewal of us, seven and a half billion, and then there was a finance purchase, uh, three hundred sixty-seven thousand one twenty, um, and this was as of the date that we issued our report, so there's more debt maybe since that date, but, um, we just pointed that out, and over on page fifty-nine is the scheduling and expenditures of federal awards, this is the, um, audit on the federal side, and, uh, it had all unmodified opinions on it, so it's, uh, no, no findings related to any of these federal awards, and, uh... Let's see, the major, major programs tested was the COVID-nineteen, parole of our state and local municipal recovery funds, and the disaster grant public assistance, so no, no noncompliance detected on, on any of those fronts. Um, and we're gonna get into, uh, the findings next, uh, we have one finding related, uh, first one would be on page seventy. In censure, unless you kind of, uh, speak on, on these, but the first one is, uh, in relation to the certain purchasing.
I guess in the, the purchasing report, there was a finding, uh, where we did note some instances of noncompliance, uh, there were some issues related to, uh, designer of certain requisitions from a few different departments, uh, that there was an instance where there wasn't a purchasing documentation that had been maintained for a particular expenditure, a couple of instances where an invoice was dated prior to a purchase order, so you're familiar with the purchasing, the central purchasing function, it begins with a requisition from a recognized, uh, official signing for individual department to officially request those funds to be authorized to be spent, and that's relative to the purchase clerk, the purchase clerk then approves it, and then that allows them to move forward with the rest of the process, i.e. obtaining the invoice, and then completing the receipt report once, once the transaction is finalized, um, and so all of these instances of noncompliance are related to certain specific pieces of that process, uh, and the last, there was an instance where the receipt report was not provided, uh, for one of the items that was tested for purchasing. Uh, we have, I have, uh, interacted some with the, uh, with the new purchase clerk function, and asking questions, and wanted to make sure that some of the corrective actions that needed to be taken have been implemented, um, correctly, and so she, she's been actively been asking the questions, and we've tried to not help, uh, answer, answering questions that could have been, and should provide some of the compliance and details to part of this process, so we're hopeful that some of these issues will, will rectify themselves and be drawn on it. Be good. Uh, let's, again, I'll make so we'll do the next finding, maybe.
Uh, page seventy-five is our management report, uh, and six findings.
So, my, uh, my sequence here, my sheet may not follow a little bit exactly, but I'll kind of walk through each of these, the road managers. Walk through each of the individual findings, um, and how to discuss, in a specific, special arrangement. So, the first finding was with an issue to the road department manager, um, there is, one of the statutes actually has, has one requirement to it, and it specifically states that any purchasing requisitions that come from the road department are to be signed by the road manager. Um, I believe that this was an issue that has been written up in prior years, and I think that the issue actually related to, uh, some misunderstanding or kind of a lack of clarity between the road manager and kind of what audit was needing out of that, and so we did actually have a discussion, I believe it was sometime last year, purchase clerk, road manager, and myself, were able to kind of finally clear that little piece up, so that's something that I have, who will go away in future audits, now that we've kind of resolved, or I think the gray area was on that one. Um, the next one, so the next findings were issued to the circuit clerk, um, the first one related to some, albeit they were minor, um, amounts that were not, excuse me, that were out of balance in the reconciliations for certain accounts, um, the criminal fund, excuse me, the criminal bank account that that office maintains was out of balance, one sixty-five forty-eight, and then the civil account that's also maintained at office was short by one twenty-five, a hundred twenty-five dollars and cents, um, this is likely, uh, and then there were also, excuse me, there were some delays in reconciliations of the fee account that's maintained by the clerk, um, I did discuss these with the clerk, um, and my understanding was that there was some access and issues or some questions related to how the reconciliation worked in her computer system, and so I believe that she was gonna reach out and work with the, uh, the customer service provider for her software to try to get some of these issues resolved, and so we looked at that, and we did that, and came back to this next audit. Um, the second finding was also, uh, issued to the circuit clerk, um, there is, so the clerks, the circuit and chanter clerks have to file an annual financial report each year that is due by April fifteenth, or whatever tax date is, I believe in this particular year it was April seventeenth, um, and it, it functions largely like a tax return, you list in all of your revenues, you list all of your expenses, and then it comes out to number at the end, and circuit and chanter credits are paid according to certain statutory caps on how much that they can earn, um, and so any amounts that are earned in excess of those caps, here, and I won't get into the detail on, on, but there's some breakdown between items that fall under that cap limitation and certain revenues that do not, but any revenues that are under that cap that are not offset by expenses do get paid back to the county's general fund each year, and that check is to be written and is due to the county whatever date the financial report is due, um, and there were some delays, uh, in, in getting that settled to the county, um, and so that was one instance, that was noted there, an instance of noncompliance. Um, and then the next finding again was related to the annual financial report for the clerk, um, I believe that there was maybe some confusion around certain items that could be claimed as expenses that would offset those revenues, uh, and so there was one item that was included on the report as an expense that would not typically be allowed, uh, and so that was one item that we let begin to be removed, and it let the, uh, let the report be calculated, so the clerk could submit that with the corrected numbers there. Let's see, the next finding is also related to the annual financial report, uh, there were some mathematical errors in some of the calculations that do off certain numbers, in particular this one affected the retirement contributions calculation, um, again, in discussions with the clerk, um, you know, my understanding, we, we, we discuss certain recommendations or solutions that she could possibly look to resolve some of these issues, you know, the, the, the good way that I would look at it is, is they're all kind of tied to the same issue, it's surrounding revenues, the fee account, and the, the annual financial report, so typically when there's a common link there, hopefully the solution would be, uh, one solution would address several of those problems, and in discussions with the clerk, my understanding is, is that she has sought some additional assistance to make sure and get some of these issues resolved, so again, we're hopeful that that is something that could potentially go away, uh, in the next audit. And then the, the last limited finding, uh, is related to the tax collector's office, um, as part of our audit each year, we do certain cash counts, um, and accounts like the tax collector's account, we often want to think about it, almost tends to function like a giant clearing account, every penny that's coming into that account is theoretically due out to someone else, and so this occurs one day, one day. Well, when we do our cash count, we take a look at not only the reconciliations, the physical account for the days cash that was collected, we also take that, that test to an additional step, and we compare the reconciled cash balance, i.e. the cash that would be available to settle out anything that's due as of the date of account, we compare that against the monies that were collected, or what would theoretically be due if they were to settle that same day. Well, in this particular instance, we identified an overage of five hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, we, we, uh, recommended to the tax collector that he potentially, uh, bring in the representative for the software, for the delta software, one of the, consider, one of the theories as to maybe what could be causing this buildup, is maybe there was something that they didn't correctly set up in the parameters, so when the system is pulling the numbers in the settlement report, telling them exactly what checks to write into, maybe there could be some hitch there, um, and so anyway, that, you know, that's kind of, I think, the best theory we have at the moment, um, but we had made the collector aware of this issue, and, and he is supposed to be following up, I believe with some, uh, outside sources that he is getting information from as well, to try to address this problem. Uh, over time, uh, you know, this buildup, obviously if there's monies that are building up in the tax collector's account, then that means that there's some entity out there that's not receiving portions of their tax revenues, and so it's very important that this matter gets sorted out, and we figure out where this money belongs, so that it can be properly settled. Um, this, if I understand correctly, that there's been, uh, a historical trend, I think, over the last couple of collectors where they left office with large amounts of money that were still in the account, so that, to me, adds a little bit of fuel to the theory that potentially it could be something to do with the setup of the computer program itself, since this appears to be a trend type issue. Um, so then we've, we've discussed this in, in pretty good detail with the collector, we've even gone so far as to take a look at a couple of those initial settlements, just to make sure that what we're seeing come in is moving out, we do notice some buildup, but we are not able to isolate exactly what's the cause of that buildup, and that is ultimately the management function. So, we look forward to discussing that further with the collector when we come back, and reperforming our count to see where we stand at that point, and depending on the results of our test, we maybe could potentially, uh, make a different reconciliation. Um, I believe that that covers the finding, as Scott had already discussed, the material weakness that drove the qualified opinion, um, and again, as he said, we are hopeful, based on what we understand from the collector's own center having implemented the accounting software, uh, that their reconciliation issue should be cleared, um, so that leaves us just as much issue to focus on there. Uh, are there any questions?
None that you could probably answer. Uh... There's no missing money, there's just monies that don't, that nobody knows where it goes.
That is correct.
It's probably sick in some accounts and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's, that's what... I thought that was really not good.
No, that was a separate thing. Okay. Oh, does anybody have any questions of these gentlemen? Thank you for waiting, and I'm sorry, I kind of lost track of y'all there for a little while, but we found you.
All right, we appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, guys? Oh, I, he said, I'm Scott, who there? Oh, I, is it, I'm Scott, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, oh. You need, you need me to leave the room?
Yes, please.
Okay, is that the end of the board meeting?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything but one thing.
Okay, we'll let that end, can you close it out?
Yeah.
You clock it out?
I'm clocking out.
Election tomorrow, now y'all make sure y'all precincts is open.
All precincts? Shouldn't be all precincts.
All right, thank you, guys.
She does, Meg sent a list.
She got it last week.
Did you get it?
That's what made me think about precincts.
All right, uh, Scott, Kevin has stepped out.
Real fast, uh, just wanna make sure the board is okay with me, y'all are engaging with INS to, to handle the application, y'all are okay with that?
What application?
The application that they need one, uh.
You wait, man?
It's a solid waste plan which is typically prepared by our engineer and so I'd like their input necessary for, for giving a report on the application.
Say that again, man.
So, the solid waste plan is prepared by our engineer. Any amendments and so forth? So, any questions we might have, you know what I'm saying, we want, wanna, I would say ask our engineer. There will be some technical questions about the facility and whatnot.
So, what, what is the engineer, what, what is that solid waste plan, we talking about, man, so what, what's the solid waste plan at this moment? Will you include anybody? That's my question, you know what I'm saying, you say, well, we talking about including other people, what is the solid waste plan now?
The next thing we have to do is the board has to review the application, review a couple of different questions, review, ask, ask for additional information if necessary and see if it satisfies, you know, four different questions. I'll, I'll review them for you if that's required.
Hold up, Scott, I don't think, I don't think this, what are you asking?
No, my question is, right now, 'cause I heard somebody amendment of solid waste, what is, uh, solid waste plan right now before you put, anybody has to vote for, we talking about anything, what is the solid waste plan and what does this say?
Before you.
Before we try to agree on anything, what is solid waste plan now?
What, the last time we altered our minute, our waste plan, two thousand fourteen, an engineer, Doug Wenderly, prepared that for us. And if you reviewed the application, uh, some of the questions being technical that I personally couldn't answer and, uh, I would like to be able to at least ask our engineer, you know, you know, their input on those four questions that the board has to, has to answer, the five questions that the board has to answer when making decisions.
That's, that's only if we decide to do what you talking about, what if we decide?
What if you must say yes or no at this point where I'm one piece? If we wanna say no, we have to say no because of these five questions.
You gotta answer.
Either, you know, and all the line, technical assistance, crossing into those questions. Whether it's yes or no, either way, I still think we need professional.
Right, you gotta give them.
So, yeah.
So, you all agrees?
So, he agree with us?
I think that was a motion.
So, so, let's make this planning clear again, you want us to do what? Give you the authority to work with the engineer to do what?
Yeah, I would like to sit over the application to the engineer along with the, in the, uh,
Yeah.
uh, fellow and ask him, you know, in his, in, 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 uh, opinion, ask him a question as well as what other additional information is this board gonna need to have to be able to handle those questions? What do we say yes or no? It, it doesn't matter, we have to be able to answer those questions, we have to do it the way to answer this question.
You talking about our engineers? Okay, 'cause, 'cause I'm getting kind of confused, 'cause one time when this first started off, if I'm not, if I can recall back in October, I thought that, uh, they said they was gonna handle that through Brad's office, now it's something totally different.
Yeah.
Because that's what I heard back then.
I don't think, I think Brad looking at some blood work and whatnot, when it was actually coming, what came back.
Hey, Scott. What you need to do is go back and review the October, the sixteenth meeting and, and listen to everything that was said and then if you need this board to do something, then, then ask us after that because what was said then is totally different from what we trying to do now, in my opinion.
I think you, you're, you are correct in that we're, what we were, they're asking before and what they're asking now, it's totally different. So I can definitely review and I have a report, it'd be better, I'll have a report to y'all next, next week, we need to get this thing as soon as possible, yes or no, just get this ball rolling, just something we can answer.
One, one more question, Scott. Uh, they submitted whatever, uh, I don't know what they submitted, 'cause I ain't never seen it.
I, you know, it's, what, what was it, um, on March twenty, I believe, what was it? It was an application.
What you get?
I emailed, I think it was on March the tw-.
And then ain't nobody looked at it, 'cause ain't nobody saying. Yes.
Did you not get it? Cause I have a. On March twel-?
Yeah, uh, twentieth, I think it was. I think that was the day it was filed.
Scott, I don't think we received that information.
So, I, I, what I'll do is just submit a report with current plan and application and here's the questions y'all need to answer, that way the board can, and if we need additional information, we'll do it.
All right.
Okay. That's it.
I just need to get clarification.
Hang on, hang on, one second, Brandy has something.
So, earlier there was a motion made, um, by Supervisor Gray, it was seconded by, I think by Supervisor, let me get to my notes. Gaines, it was to spread across the minutes, the N D Q guidance for modifications or the actual application, I just wanted to confirm.
That was the, that was the guideline. That was the guideline.
I just wanted to make sure, that, that's how I had it, not the application, but the guidelines.
Yeah, no, 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 it's not the application, the guidelines.
And that's what I had, I just wanted to make sure.
Does anybody have any other, uh, questions? Scott, you got anything?
Nope.
Uh, taking a motion to reset. Supervisor Gaines, second. Supervisor Hutchins. All in favor? All in favor?